I will call the order Tuesday, December 9th, meeting of Dayton City Council. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. The agenda.
Open the motion.
I'll second.
Dave and Stephanie, any changes?
Oh, yes, sorry. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, one item. I did forget to update the presentation for the 2026 budget, not 25 budget. I think we've already passed that one, so just amending the letter to say 2026 for item N. Doesn't change anything with the items and information in there, just which budget we're talking about.
Any other changes? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carries four to zero. And we are on to, oh, what is this recap? What close? Oh, that was more. Do you have a thing for me to read?
Yeah, it's on the council packet. Page two, I guess. Yep. Do you have the packet up? It's page two of the packet.
I do. Yeah, all right. Sometimes this is very concise and sometimes not so much. All right. On November 25th, 2025, Dayton City Council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D-03 for the purpose of considering strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals. Persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, Councilmember Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, Stephanie Henderson, Dave Fisher, and Dave, city, excuse me, city administrators Zach Dowd, city administrator Amy Benting, city attorney Amy Schmidt. During the closed meeting, the city council considered the labor agreement proposal from the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local Number 320, representing essential supervisory employees. At the conclusion of their consideration of the terms, the labor agreement proposal from the Teamsters, the city council directed the city administrators to how to respond to the proposed terms during ongoing negotiations with the Teamsters. Okay. Our consent, I need a motion and a second.
Open the motion.
Dave, Scott, any discussion?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Gary, trust me, I'm not creating an issue here. I don't want a whole bunch of scrutiny for asking a question. The turnout gear, we got 10 sets, and I'm going to call them class one and class two because I don't know the difference.
Fair enough.
You had told me that, what I'm not quite clear on here, we got 10 sets going for maybe the current firefighters or maybe the mercenaries that we hire.
Councilmember Solanek, so yes, we are purchasing 10 sets. Those are 10 complete sets, so you're class one for interior firefighting.
Yep.
In 2017, so we have, or excuse me, in 2027, because we purchased them in 2017, 10-year shelf life per se, per NFPA. We have various or we have numerous firefighters that are wearing that gear, but some of them are wearing the coat and some of them are wearing the pants based on size needs. So our intent is to replace 10 firefighters with that turnout gear, freeing up those 10 sets for about, we'll say, two years. There are abouts, I'm not sure exactly the month that they expire in. And then the type two sets, we are purchasing for everyone. So again, that's for everything except for interior firefighting. So allow them to use those during incidents that don't require high significant heat.
High heat.
And then it also allows for like when we do send it out for clean and sewing repairs that they still have a set of gear to wear.
And so you once made a comment that you can't buy the set until you got the firemen because you don't know what size to get. So apparently, we're just kind of hoping that it can jump them around and fit whoever needs them.
Yeah, that's kind of how we've operated. I mean, it's just kind of in general.
Right.
So most of the sizes that we currently have are for the average firefighter, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So the new, the replacements will go to the current existing firefighters and then we should have at least, we believe, we currently have, what is it, 38 sets of turnout gear ranging in sizes for 27 firefighters. So we have a few extra sets, but again, it's really based on size. So even if we did hire up to the eight, the practice typically is to purchase for existing firefighters first and then as other ones come in, we'll.
Yeah, and if you got to buy a couple more later, so what?
Yep.
The other question I have on the 25 class twos, why not buy all 25 in that one time and save the 300 bucks? It's about 300 bucks difference roughly per set.
So, yeah, so we are purchasing, just to clarify, so we're purchasing 10 complete sets.
Yep.
At like $4,300 a set, 4321.
That's the class one.
That's the class one. And then we are purchasing all 25 of the class two at the same time, so both of those are coming together, if that makes. So that's the total of the 67,000.
Okay, but the packet says you're buying 10 of the class twos for 850 bucks roughly.
I can clarify. I'm more of a layman's terms, he could talk more of the sophisticated stuff. So they give you a discount on the 10 because you bought 10 class ones.
Oh, not on all 25.
Yeah, they give you a discount on the class twos if you buy a class one set with it. If you don't buy a class one set with it, they don't give you that additional $300 discount. They still give you a discount if you're buying 15 of them, but they don't give you that class one discount.
Right, you got to buy the class one to get the discount. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, Zach and I tried to, we went back and forth trying to figure out how to explain it, so it made some sense, so.
Didn't make sense to me, so.
It didn't make sense to me either.
I had no layman's terms for that baby.
All right, that's all I got on that.
Any others?
Nope.
Anybody else?
I had just one. This was on item, item G, related to the authorizing pavement, payment for easement acquisitions on 113th Avenue. Just in looking at the bids, Jason, the one thing that stood out to me was, I mean, I always look to try to find out where the, you know, the big swings in the price are. And there was quite a range with this badge.
Stop that, I stopped looking at that.
But what I'm wondering about is where they were, there's quite a wide span on pipe pricing, which I kind of scratched my head about. Everybody's buying pipe from the same place, I would guess, and why there's such a variation in their costs on that.
Yeah, it usually comes down to where they put the money for it. It's the estimation of it, so usually your pipe price increases significantly with depth because it includes the digging required for it. But some will put their money in other items, so some will put it into the pipe itself, some will put it into like the general site work, for example, to come up with the Z price. But it's kind of where they put it. You're right, they're all paying comparable prices for the pipe itself because they're probably buying from one of two suppliers. But how they construct their bids through the P items is up to them and that can vary.
Yeah, thank you, that helps. And we're comfortable with this contractor that was the low bidder?
We did, in all honesty, we don't have a lot of experience with them, only on a couple small jobs, but we did reach out to them and ask for references and they provided a lot. They have more experience than I would have guessed even. And we actually even did talk to other contractors that have spoken highly of them, so it appears they're very capable of this type of work.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
I have more of like a logistics question, I think, and it's for Marty, for the public works truck purchase. In that, the quote, or like the different quotes that you got, and I might have just missed it, but the graphics aren't in there because we will put graphics on the side to match the others. Is that just, it's paid for separately or is it something that normally?
We have some in stock from RPM already, so we'll just put those on the side there.
That's even better. Thank you. And in the future, though, that would be something that we would look at with the full package, right, when we purchase a vehicle, or the graphics normally included in the quote? This is my real first time going through that.
The graphics on our trucks are very cheap, they're about 100 bucks for, you know, both sides of the vehicle, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Typically, for the other, I think, public safety vehicles, we'd have it all in one cost because it's one cost for the vehicle itself.
Yeah.
We may have a lease through enterprise, which we do like with the police vehicles, but then we have a separate cost for the equipment, whether, I don't know, to kind of outrig it or.
Yeah. The lights and the tow, like, package were on there, so I was like, should graphics have been on there? But if you have ones extra, that's even better. Thank you, Marty. What are you doing with the old truck? I could use a truck.
I don't know that you need this truck.
I don't think you want this truck.
Something with four-wheel drive, that's all I'm asking. Sorry for being late.
Do you have any questions about consent?
Um, okay, I actually did. The EDA terms, was one of them, sorry, I don't have it, everything was an odd year or?
Not necessarily.
Or even anything, what was the years?
They all got corrected, so there was, as we've changed over with staff, we've had different terms and who it should be where, so I'm trying to get to the item here. Basically, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, I'm going to say what they should be. So we have one for 2025, two for 2027, one for 2029, and one for 2030.
That was the one that seemed odd to me because everything else was an odds, like they went every two years, and then there was a 2030. And so I just wanted to know, like, and also, that's a five-year term, which seemed kind of long to me.
So 2030 was appointed in 2024.
Okay.
So it's a six-year term.
Oh, okay, okay.
EDA is six-year terms, so the last one that was approved, or the last one that would have been appointed, would have been Jack Bernans, and he would have been until 2030, based on the fact that his term, that term expired on December 31st, 2024.
Okay, so I just, like I said, it caught me because everything else was odd and.
Technically, we didn't approve that one till what, May of '25, so when that one realized that he had been, you know, his term had come up, then we did it. And that's where the kind of confusion happened with staff and council and getting you the correct information, so we wanted to make sure that we corrected it as best we could.
Okay, but that one is supposed to be an even year, even though the others are odd years, and they're all six-year terms?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that because that one seemed odd to me.
Would it be silly to clean that up so that they're just all odd years?
Yeah. Stacks?
Yeah, we try to do at least, you know, we try to keep it to one a year. It seems to be easier to replace one, maybe two a year, than it is to replace all five or all four at one time, depending, you know, who's on the EDA and where they're at with their business or whatnot.
The reason why we have two in 2027 is because we expanded from five members to seven members, so.
Yep, but we also have a 2029, 2025, and, well, this one, and then we got the odd one, or the even year at once, so.
So if you wanted to put it on an odd year, would you, since it was May?
Well, you'd either.
Would you just push it to 2031?
Or stretch it.
I think the problem is that you've then got one that's been on there for six and a half.
You got it.
Or do you move it to 2029 and then they're just all, and we have two. Two and two.
So if, yeah, so obviously, there's another one coming up on the agenda tonight of appointing an EDA member, that would be pushed to 2031 because it's a six-year term again.
Right.
And so that would mean you have two with 27, one in 29, one in 31, and 31. They're not going to make a big difference.
Oh, I see.
Because it'll be.
Okay, I get it.
It shouldn't make a difference as long as it's tried to be one.
Sure.
And that's how it's supposed to be set up.
Yeah, that's fine.
I know it's a bit confusing, odd years and even years and such, but.
Well, and just, I was.
Yep, great, they're good questions.
Not, also, everyone else, it was a four-year term, I didn't realize there were six-year terms. It seemed really long, particularly because they are, like, yeah, which is fine. And then this one, I apologize if this was already talked about, the fire department turnout gear. Normally, there's a budget, like, was that already budgeted for? I just didn't see, or was that already hammered out?
Councilmember Van Aston, yes, that is, currently, that's part of our existing budget.
Okay. Let's see here, I think. And then Zach, you and I had talked about the personnel policy, about the unpaid time for nursing mothers and that the way it was phrased.
Yep, I did not get a chance to clarify that with our HR firm.
Okay.
That was put in by our HR firm based on some changes made at the legislative level, so I don't have an answer for you besides it stays in brackets because I don't know if it's supposed to be unpaid or paid. In my personal opinion, if it's something that they're going to be during work hours, it would be paid because it's, you know, based on if they need to do it.
Yeah.
That's a nursing mother thing.
I was just, the way it's worded was unclear, but if you're working with their HR.
The HR firm is the one who updated the language, so I wasn't city staff, and that's why I reached out, and I haven't heard back, and that's on me now.
Oh, well, I mean, it was, I told you yesterday, I don't expect 24-hour, like, results, it was just my questions. Okay, those were my questions, and again, I apologize for being late, so, and shout out to Norris Hunter for plowing me out so I could get out of my driveway, so.
I got one more off.
Oh, go ahead.
Actually, on the M also, the personnel policy, and I chit-chatted with Zach about this earlier today, on page 73, there's two paragraphs in there. One states originally, first, it states, if an employee works 35 hours, you need to add in five hours of personal leave to make up for the 40. And in the next paragraph, it says if a person is, takes four hours or less, then you don't need to use paid leave. So it didn't make sense to me. I mean, one paragraph is contradicting the others, what I assumed.
I think what it's trying to say is if you're going to take four or less, you can flex that time as an exempt employee. If you're going to take more than four hours of time, which would be five hours of time, then you must take it as leave. And that's what it's trying to, trying to get to, is that as an exempt employee, I'm salaried and most of the people that are here are salaried, so it doesn't really matter how many hours you work, but if you're going to flex hours and whatever, we try to say if you're going to take off a day of work, that's a vacation day. So you can just continue to bank on a bunch of vacation because you worked three nights in a row in one month or whatever. If you flex four hours and you don't need to take vacation, you can just flex your hours based on the fact that you worked more hours that week.
Oh, okay.
It's a way to use up vacation.
You can pick it up later.
So that you can, instead of having everyone flex all their hours, so you have to take vacation if you're going to use more than five hours of flex time.
Okay. On page 94, it has a little clause in there about being an employee and going for public office. And I know we talked about this like a year ago and just never went anywhere with it.
Correct.
Where are we going to go with that? Because theoretically, that shouldn't be in there. Or we could have an addition in there that says our.
We were going to crack that, yep.
Our policy could.
I don't remember giving, giving clear direction, like, I'll have to address that. I think there was discussion about it, and then it kind of just went.
I think the direction we gave you was, let's wait till after this election.
Yep.
And we didn't pick it up. And we probably should.
That's something the council wants to address, I can address that right now, it just states this in here because if you are a city employee and you go for a public office and you get it, this is based on full-time employment now.
Yep.
Then you'd have to basically give an leave of absence without pay to fill that lighted official role so that you no longer are a city employee, or you can resign if you'd like to do that way. But that's what the current personal policy states. It does not address anything about a paid-out firefighter or part-time firefighter.
What does it say, full-time?
It just, any city employee, and it's intended to say that if you're, the personal policy for that, it should be clarified to say a full-time, even though it doesn't, it just says any city employee. It should say full-time city employees, what it's intended to be.
Which theoretically should say any employee.
It currently says any employee.
But it's intended, I think it's been interpreted to say, to mean full-time.
Our ordinances say full-time. They conflict with this.
That was the state statute, too, that said.
Yes, that's the minimum, yep.
Right.
But our ordinance is that, the policies were, I think we wanted to go. Hey, do you remember that?
I think where we want it to go is that if you're an employee, you can't file for public office.
Right.
I'm not saying that we wanted to go there.
That's clear, that's been in there for.
So they can, there's a conflict.
Regardless, they conflict.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't disagree.
So they kind of be fixed that they don't conflict.
Yep.
That I think we can all agree on.
Okay.
So is that directed from the council that we'd like to change that?
I think this is fine, yeah, I think we'd like to change that.
I think it's making more of an explicit policy that says this is what.
Well, the policy is correct, it says any.
Correct, I think it's more of a specific policy that we want to make specifically related to public office and employees, I think is what my direction and request is, is to make it more explicit instead of having it in the personal policy.
Oh, you mean, correct the ordinance?
Correct.
Yes, yep. Yeah.
I've got two.
Okay.
Sounds good, I'll bring it back.
And now that's all I've got.
I actually do have one more thing.
Go ahead.
It's a correction, sorry, I'm a little discombobulated. It's a correction for the minutes, and it was just, my guess, a typo from the AI interpreting what I said. So it's on page five, under the staff consultant and council updates.
Normal minutes or the work session?
The normal minutes. It says, Van Aston requested a future discussion on reviewing home setting, and it should be homesteading, requirements for home exited businesses, and it should be home extended businesses. So like I said, I think it was just the AI not hearing me correctly, but that should be clarified, so.
Those will be corrected in the minutes moving forward.
Yeah, but, page five. Okay, that was all my things. Page five. Okay, that was all my things.
Anybody else? Okay, motion second. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero for consent. On to open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? Anybody online for open forum?
We do have one individual who has raised their hand on line.
All right.
If you'd like to.
Who had to search for that?
I did not. It popped up as a suggestion. I thought it was funny.
Cool. Okay, Eric Supplet, 11534, Brayburn Trail. And I guess I'd just like to comment on two things, one on agenda item, one on non-agenda item. So the first being the non-agenda item, I know there's been discussion in the last meeting, there was, three River Park District was brought in to discuss the trail along Dayton River Road and the river. And while I understand it's kind of a convoluted issue, and there's residents over there that are against it, and therefore they need to be supported in their opposition, I think from a resident who lives in a different part of Dayton, I guess I would hope that the city and Parks Commission and those would work with Three Rivers Park District to have a kind of a long-term vision for a greenway of sorts through the city, whether it be in that area or other areas. And myself, as someone who likes to bike and stuff, it's much nicer biking on those or greenway type of areas versus a trail next to a road. And I think it also too, it plays right into, you know, the slogan or whatever for Dayton, which is to preserve our rural character. So I think some of the opposition that we need to preserve some tax base, I also get, but at the same time, there's 40 and 60 acre farms that are going to be selling every other year and developing into 100 to 300 home developments. And I feel like that's going to supplement some of that tax base, where these are opportunities to work with a local organization to hopefully even connect Down Creek Park to areas of Dayton through maybe a greenway of sorts. So that's the one item. The other item is just regarding the agenda item V on the aerial truck. And I guess like through the discussion tonight, if not covered already or mentioned in the past, I'd hope to just get a little context tonight in that discussion on whether or not there is a fee that the city would be on the hook for with this cancellation. It looks like in at least some of the contract that's listed in the packet, you know, they could potentially be up to 10 to 20% fee on the purchase price. And I'm just curious if that is accurate or not, given some of the discussions last year on having basically an out in the contract to not be responsible, but a couple of meetings back, that sounding maybe less certain. So I guess that's just my request for that discussion that we can hear about, if there is any fee or penalty, or what the likelihood of that is, and if so, how we ended up in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If anybody else is on open forum, I would like you to open forum. Please use the raise your hand function. I am not seeing anybody, man.
Cool. We will move on. Staff consultant, council, date set.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. As we approach the holidays, I was looking at the upcoming calendar for staff. It looks as though we will have one single Friday that happens after the Christmas holidays that we will be open. Situation doesn't happen very often, but we will be open for a four-hour day on Friday following two days off, and then having it followed by a weekend. Doesn't seem like a very good use of resources to have people back for four hours on a Friday, to have them be back for four hours and then leave again for two days. Don't know how much is going to be handled in that time. I did look back at last year, and we handled one resident in the two days after Christmas last year on Thursday and Friday, and 13 hours of work. So I don't know if it's the best use of resources. My question to the council is, are you okay if we close City Hall, City Offices that day, just because it's a four-day? I understand that we can have people back here, yes, but it just seems.
Is it a paid or unpaid benefit if we closed? How does that work?
That's the next question. So we can, we can close City Hall at any time that's needed, and based on resources, we would have them either use vacation time or use it as a, as holiday. So we could say, and we've done this historically in the past with the day after Thanksgiving, that is a day that the offices are closed, but city staff has to use vacation time to take that day off.
What if someone doesn't have the vacation time to take it off?
Then they can work. City Office just close, like you can't donate to the phone. You can be physically here. Just City Office are closed, residents will be able to come in, so they can work and finish up emails or get caught up with anything. I mean, I don't think city staff has any shortage of work to get done.
Well, yeah, but so if someone didn't have vacation time, they still had the opportunity.
Correct. It just wouldn't be open for residents to be able to.
Or they could just not take pay, not?
You could take it unpaid, I guess, if you really wanted to as well. It does benefits would be then prorated, but that's fine.
But it would be up to an individual who could make that choice.
Do you let them borrow vacation if they're, if they don't have any?
We have historically done that.
Okay.
We don't do it more than one full day, so they could borrow four hours of time if they wanted to, and then they go negative for a timeframe until the next, I don't know, the next month. But we don't typically let them go more than one month negative, just because historically it can burn people and the employer pretty quickly. So not saying that people would take advantage of it, but if you.
Yeah, there's somebody, yeah, I was just curious, because we, yeah.
So that's my one question to the council, is it okay to close it? And then how would the council like to handle that? If that's a various answer, or have it paid holiday? And I'm fine with either way, it does not matter to me. I just think we should close City Hall for that day.
Well, if they take holiday, does it, it takes away another holiday.
If it's holiday, it doesn't come out of vacation time.
But.
But it would come out of, the city would just pay them for that day. I'm not different than in Christmas and Christmas Eve.
I mean, I think it would be the same as the Friday after Thanksgiving, like it's a four-day and it's a, they take it off, or if they want to come in and work and just do stuff, they can, but to close. So I'm okay with closing City Hall, but it should be handled the same way the Friday after Thanksgiving is. That's my opinion.
Vacation.
That's all good. Okay, sounds good. I appreciate that, and the staff appreciates that too, because it allows them to have a longer time with their family, which is appreciated. I'll be out of the office for two weeks, starting on December 22nd. That's just more of an FYI. I want to make sure the next council meeting is on the 23rd of December. At least it's supposed to be a very quick meeting. Does anybody have any objections moving to the 30th, which would be the following Tuesday? You will not be around for the 30th. Okay. We only need a quorum of three. Typically it's just payment of claims, it's nothing like.
I'll be here.
A five-minute meeting.
I should be here. Okay.
Okay, so the 30th of work is eight o'clock. Seems like a good time. Works for everybody?
AM.
AM, yeah, not eight, 11 o'clock PM.
No, 8:00 AM.
Does not work.
No, unless y'all want to come help feed animals with me. I can be here by 9:30.
Does a certain time work on the 30th? That's better.
Anytime after 9:30 AM, but like, I'm not getting up at 5:00 in the morning to feed my animals, so that I can come here and approve a payment of claims. That's not happening. But I can be here by 9:30.
Probably not. I'm having shoulder surgery on the 29th. I don't think I'll be.
9:30 is fine.
9:30? In what fashion does that work, 9:30?
Yeah, I'm sure it's right.
So we'll work on the 30th. The reason why I asked move to the 30th is because Amy's out for two weeks, recovering from surgery currently, so try to get her a leather couple of days. It'd be nice to be able to allow her to get back into work before she has to be. I mean, it counts because it's only five minutes.
You know, and, and that one, we could do that one where just one of us was here, right?
Correct, yep. So you could do one here, and the other two can be remote. It's totally fine. In the future, the mayor brought up to me before the council meeting, and I want to make sure it's known by the council, is that other, I did reach out to other city administrators that don't have a second council meeting in December, because they don't want to do payment of claims, just like we do right now. And the council passes a resolution and/or an approval that gives the city administrator approval to cut checks like normal, and then we would just approve those at the following council meeting in January, essentially. And so next year, I'll probably look to do that, so that nobody has to be bugged for a five-minute meeting in the morning. And then you just give me authorization to cut checks for one timeframe, and then you just approve those at the next council meeting. I mean, they'll be then in two separate buckets between what I approved and the payment of claims, and then what the council approves at the actual meeting itself. So that's just a more or less an FYI in the future. And then just a reminder for everyone watching, or the council themselves, that there's our all employee year-end recap tomorrow in the afternoon, so City Offices will be closed at noon. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
So to clarify, there's no meeting on the 23rd?
No meeting on 23rd.
And that will have a very short, like literally five-minute meeting?
Literally. I don't even know if it'll be five minutes. It might be one minute.
Okay. But at 9:30, because yeah, definitely not getting up at 5:00 AM for that.
9:30 AM on the 30th is what I have.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marty?
Mayor and council, not too much to report tonight. We're moving into snowplow mode pretty quickly here. Tomorrow, it's going to be our third full plow call-out. We've had a bunch of nuisance snows in between things. I just want to remind people that our threshold for full plow is two inches of snow on the ground, or more than that. With the less than that, we will keep mains open and just run the mains and emergency routes. And if there's any hazardous areas, we will take care of those. But two inches is the full plow out. We'll be out at 4:00 in the morning, tomorrow morning, to hopefully get all of this snow off the road in a timely fashion. I do have a couple of guys out running plows tonight. They'll be here till 8:00, and then they'll be back in at 4:00 tomorrow morning. Oh, and just another note, I will be down two drivers starting from Thursday this week. I have one guy going out, he's having knee surgery, so he's going to be out for at least six to eight weeks. And I have another guy out who's broken his pelvis, broken a leg, and gashed a knee in a chainsaw incident. So we won't go any further than that. So yeah, it may take us a little longer to get through routes. I'm.
That wasn't on the job, was it?
No, it wasn't.
Right, okay.
I'm back on the full-time plower route, so that may impact some of my other duties.
I wouldn't mind trying that once. I wouldn't mind trying that once.
I think he's talking about the snow.
Replace a few mailboxes, but.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I just want to report back on Engine 12. That repair came back roughly around 3,500, so a little bit less than fully anticipated. That's all I have for this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. We'll be doing shop with the cop on this Wednesday, December 10th. We have six kids that we'll be bringing, and two officers that will be assisting.
Jason?
No report for me.
Scott?
I just got one little thing that I want us to get to at some point. And it doesn't have to be this one, but I'm hoping that we can get something done at Stevens Park as far as the cover over the, the ban show, done in 2026. And well, the rest of the upgrades are probably 2027. But if we do look at this cover, we have to get this in order so that we have it in April.
But doesn't, weren't we talking about lifting that, or raising that concrete and adding?
And expanding.
Yeah, that's not, that's not part of this. That has nothing to do with getting this ordered. I mean, there's time. Marty and I actually looked at that a month or so ago.
Wouldn't it be a different size?
No, it's, well, 30 by 30 is what this deal is.
Oh, so it started out bigger.
It's a little bit bigger than.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
The stage is, yeah, the current stage.
I don't see the rush. I'd rather wait and do the whole thing as a package when we're ready, personally.
I would rather, well, the problem with.
I don't want to do piecemeal bits and pieces without having a final plan. Sorry, Scott.
I don't have a problem with it, but I guess, what do you guys want to do?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know how to, is there a timing issue for getting it by next spring? Is that what?
Hey, it takes three or four months to get it made. And if we're not going to put it in till June or July, then I might as well wait, I guess, you know. To me, I'd like to see it in before we start the concert season.
Yeah, well, we put this off last year, waiting for this, this MSA package, and it just seems like it'd be nice to get this moving.
I have a question. Because I'm not looking at the plan in front of me. The plan for us is to extend, extend the concrete, correct? And I thought that that whole part was going to be covered by the ban, or is it just a piece of it covered by the ban shell?
The entire stage would be covered by the ban shell. Now, this is a 30 by 30 unit.
Okay.
And currently, currently, the stage that's out there is roughly 20 by 30. So you would have 10 feet covered, extended out in front of it.
Did we have dimensions? We didn't, do we have dimensions on the plan? Again, I'm not looking at it in front of me for how big the concrete slab would be after it was extended.
So yeah, we were going to extend the whole of the stage area, almost to double its size on the master plan, and add a dance floor area in front, I think. So it was going to be extended both sideways. So it'd be about 40 by 60, I think. It's about 60 feet long at the end of the day. Having talked with Scott, Scott doesn't feel like we need to extend that area any bigger than it is currently. That would be something that, you know, I'd be guided by the council on if, you know, you want to go with what's on the master plan and expand that. The other part of this, I'm talking with MSA to get some cost in. We've got a $1.5 million budget. I want to itemize that budget to see what is the priority, whether putting this on knocks out the ban, the splash pad, or what we need to have with the splash pad, like the bathrooms and parking to make that operable. I think there's some decisions that we need to make on where we're going to spend that $1.5 million. If we can get everything in for the $1.5 million, then that's fine. But I think that we need to direct the spending of that budget, you know, how you want to spend it.
Do we have a timeline for that? So do we know, like, I know that you're working on that, it's the holidays and everything, but do you expect to have that like early in the year, or how?
Second meeting in January is what I'm targeting.
So that would still give us, if even if it was three months from that.
That's three months.
Day, well, no, I mean, from that day, three months from there, wouldn't be able to put anything, do any work until, you know what I mean? We would, I think there's time in, okay.
Yeah, we don't have to decide right now. I mean, we've got January.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I'm saying, is could Marty go and have those conversations and bring back some information, and so we could decide if this is the route, or if.
I think there's a few things to consider with this as well. If we add in extra concrete in there, we need to do some civil engineering and other stuff like that, so there will be additional costs that way as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it to attention, because otherwise it'll be October.
Well, and that's, and that's why I was asking about the timeline, because if we're thinking that we're not going to hear back from them for another four or five months, that's a different story than, you know, second week in January being the target. And I would rather have more information than us say yes, and then, you know, we've bought something that we're then kind of heading to work around. So that's kind of where I was going from.
Anything else, Scott?
Nope.
I did have a resident reach out about, some question about some of our older signage that.
More than one.
Oh, yeah, a little, some historic signage, maybe, and about whether or not there's any plans to update that signage. And I didn't know the answer to that question, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Marty and I talked about this just today, so very relevant conversation. You will have an item, I think we're planning on the 13th or the 27th of January, to have an item in front of you guys related to branding, before we make any decisions related to signage.
Totally fair.
So we'll have that conversation on the 13th or 27th of January.
Branding is in, maybe looking at our branding?
The city branding, that's correct.
Sweet.
I would prefer not to spend any more resident tax dollars on signage that we need to replace. If you.
Yes.
Do not like the branding of the city currently.
Yes.
We would like to keep the branding consistent, wherever that is, and the more signs we put up, to then change the branding costs more money. So I prefer to only change one or two, or all of our logoed signs or whatever. So Marty and I will work on that, and we'll.
But I really like my hoodie. I don't want to.
So it'll come back in January.
I have another, like, kind of maybe off-the-wall question, and this may just be my sentimental nature, but that sign's been there for a really long time. So is there some way we can, I don't want to, listen, I understand that things need to be updated. I get all of that, but is maybe the sentimental part of me, I don't know how we're going to do this, but is there some way to?
Save it, preserve it?
Preserve it somewhere. It can be beautiful.
Yes.
It was something that was, been there for a really long time, and some members of the community were pretty, felt pretty strongly about that. And I think there's a way to preserve our heritage, but also like move and look towards the future. So again, I don't know how you go about doing that, but if we could.
Are you talking about just keeping it somewhere, or fixing what's in place, and then dealing with new stuff later?
I'm talking about keeping it somewhere. And I, we need to move into the, I, I don't know what the, what the correct answer is here, but I do agree with our branding needing to be the same. And so if you've assigned one place, it should match in other places. But I don't think that let's, you know, take it down and huck it into the dumpster is the answer, I guess, is what I'm kind of getting at. So if we can find some creative way to do something, I think that.
Yeah, Marty and I had the same conversation. I agreed exactly that we should keep some sort of homage to the history of us, in that we should have some sort of way to, whether that's restore those a little bit, so that you can see what they were like, or just keep them in their same kind of status that they are today, and being able to keep them somewhere, and put them somewhere in some sort of, I don't know.
Like an activity center, have a wall with some historic photos.
We'll figure out something, so they aren't just.
Could we put them at LC Stevens? Because we do like, because you know, they, in the plan, they had that, where you walked down, and LC Stevens had that art, whatever, like, could we say, you know, here's our, it doesn't have to be in the middle, but could it go somewhere and say this was, you know, where we've been, our heritage, and maybe have a showcase?
I think there's a lot of things in LC Stevens that, you know, there is a lot of opportunity to put some heritage stuffs in that area, you know, for, you know, all of Dayton, not just there.
Yeah.
We did even think about moving the old town hall down there as some kind of a building there. So there are quite a few of those ideas out.
You mean my neighbor?
Yeah, your neighbor. He's complaining about you.
How many times have I just arrived to that thing? My kids to get out and stand in front?
Yeah, city staff is aware of it, and we'll do what we can to make sure that we save that, and.
I wonder, I think it's the one on Fernbrook that's kind of fallen down. Maybe that one could get rescued, so that it doesn't end up, you know, getting destroyed.
There were a boatload of people in construction, all things, that were willing to resurrect that sign.
We will, yeah, so we'll come back in January, and then what happened to that conversation? We'll then, yeah, another conversation related to the signs.
I think open to all options, right?
Yep.
But specifically to that one on Fernbrook, I was approached by Dayton Lions that they would want to do some restoration work on that, and just, you know, preserve it until we get to the final sign design there.
His kid actually helped build them.
Oh, really?
Jack, who are you talking about? From the Lions?
Yeah, there's John Knutson spoke to me.
Oh, John, okay. One of the members, his son actually helped build those things, so yeah. Anything else?
I left my notes at home, because I frantically tried to get here. That's what I remembered.
Disheveled? I have nothing.
I'm a hobbie, sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for all the work they put into the Holly Dayton Parade.
Oh, yeah, that was cold.
And, you know, shout out to the residents who braved the weather. I guess it's worse tonight, but it wasn't that, that great for watching a parade. And I was impressed by all the little kids that were out there, because they, they looked cold. But they, it was a great event, and I just wanted to say thank you for all your work that went into that. That's all I got.
I have another question for Marty. Oh, sorry. I had heard a resident talking about our fire hydrants. So I have a question about like hydrant testing and flushing. Are we only testing at like the end of the trunk line, or are we, do we test every hydrant?
So we have two different areas. The Maple Grove area that we're supplied, supplied by Maple Grove, they have clean water in there. And so in a lot of areas there, we will just, we do a rotational thing. So we will select an area, and then we will just do the end of the line on those ones. And then we'll do another area, and we'll do all of the hydrants. So it's on a four-year rotation. So basically, that area's a quadrant. Every four years, every hydrant gets tested.
Okay.
In the northeast part of town, every hydrant is tested every time that we go out. We have to flush everything, because we've got so much iron in the water, we need to flush that out of the pipes. Because the water from Maple Grove is treated already, we don't have that same issue.
Okay. So right now, do we have hydrants that don't, that aren't operational? And like, what's the process if we, somebody ran into one that wasn't? You would, like, what's the process for someone to tell you that?
Well, generally, if somebody finds one, either they report to the fire department or myself, and then we will go out, and we have the ability to take the hydrant apart and put it back together, replace parts and all that good stuff. So if, if somebody finds a hydrant that's not working, they can get ahold of me, and I will schedule that and get, get a crew out to test it out.
Do we have any right now that we know for sure are not operational?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
I'm just, I, it's something that I had heard, this idea of like ghost hydrants that don't work. And so I was like, oh, like, is that a thing? And how would somebody go about letting you know, or what's the process for that?
No, I mean, all the ones over here, we definitely test them. And the ones over there, like I said, are on a four-year rotation. I mean, I can't, it's, because of the way Maple Grove operates, that's the way that they operate their system. It minimizes water wasted and stuff like that. So that's how they want to operate it. And it makes sense to do it that way for them.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, if we had ones that weren't operational, that's a pretty big issue that we should definitely do something about. So I feel a lot better. So thank you so much, Marty.
Anything else? All right. Item N. Sorry. Did I give you kind of an empty, empty look there?
Good evening, Mayor's Members of Council. This is the reason why we have to hold the council meeting tonight, is because we have a public hearing. This went on everyone's tax statements. So the reason why we can't change a meeting is because of this reason, is we have a TNT meeting tonight. Historically, if we other, or in the future, if we do have a meeting like this, and there's this bad weather, we will, we'll certainly try to look to reschedule it. But we have to have this item. So through the taxation 2026 budget, hopefully no one's surprised by any of the things in here. I tried to just provide this mostly for the residents, so they have information. We did approve a preliminary levy and budget on September 9th of this year. We will approve it hopefully tonight. Final levy and budget, that'll be later in the council meeting. And then we'll certify the levy, which I can't spell correctly, obviously, December 31st of 2025. It's not levy, it's levy. So doing well so far. 2025 legislative session impacts. One of the items that we did, updated our personal policies related to the breaks, that was one item that was updated, that was done by our HR firm. Now, it's every six hours, we are required to give them a 15-minute rest break and a 30-minute break for a meal, instead of eight hours, which was previously. January 2026, I think most people are aware of, is the paid family medical leave that begins. That was not a new legislative session in 2025, but I do want to make sure everyone's aware that that does start in January 2026. The 0.88% payroll tax can be split. We were able to do a private party at 0.74%, and we just did a 50/50 split of that. So that did save the city and employees a little bit of dollars. It's not a lot, but it is something. And then there was some updates and changes to the earned safe and sick leave, related to how that can be used, and who's classified to be able to utilize it, and that you can give that all to them upfront if you want to. Currently, our sick leave balance meets the E S S T bank, so we don't have to make any changes besides put a slash in E S S T on our sick leave balance and call it a day. So nothing too crazy and major. Tax levy parameters and information, this is more or less just for everybody to be aware of, that a 1% tax rate change is equivalent to $54 a year for the average home. That's a $534,000 house. 1% tax rate is equivalent to roughly $242,000 for the city, so $54 a year for residents, 242,000 for us, roughly. 1% tax levy increase is equivalent to $88,000. So there's a difference between the tax rate, the tax levy. CPI increase for the one year is 1.8%. In the last two months, or from September, in September 2025, it was 0.8%. And that, one thing that is commonly misunderstood is that when there's more building in a city, we get more dollars. That is not correct. That just means everyone shares a little less of the pie. The tax dollars received by the city do not change for the entire year. We can't all of a sudden get more dollars in because more building activity happens, or we get more houses or more businesses. They provide no more tax dollars than before, but they just divvy up the pie a little more for everybody. And we still get the same $100 to operate on as we did today versus what we did last year, two years ago. Our property tax is calculated. This is also something. Our property taxes calculated, this is also something that people just don't understand how it's done, and I understand. The first process is done is how much is going to cost us to run the city. That's whether it's operations, debt, or capital. We then subtract on any other revenue sources that we know of. Those could be grants, those could be state aids, those could be interest. They can be services that we do, whatever it may be. And whatever basically that difference is, it equals the levy. So that's how the levy is determined. And then the rate equals the levy divided by the capacity, and that's how I mentioned in the last slide. $88,000 of levy increase for 1% is not the same as 1% tax rate increase. That is a $242,000 number. Assess the value of your home is taxed by the rate to give you the tax that you have. You may have credits or refunds that come that gives you your net tax, and then next net tax equals your property taxes. A homeowner pays the property taxes of the county. County takes those taxes, divides them up, and then gives them either to us at the school district or the mosquito control district or the state or whoever may have, and then we receive that tax settlement twice a year, just like you pay on your property taxes. 2026 proposed levy for this year going forward is 7.16% increase or $628,000. That is down from what you may have signed your property tax statement, about 1.71%, or 1.81%, sorry, from 8.97% from the preliminary tax levy statement. So what you saw on your preliminary tax levy statement is not correct for the city portion. I can't speak for the county portion, and I can't speak for the district portion, but I can't speak for the city portion, that it will be lower when you get your final tax levy or tax settlement in March with your evaluation for 2027 than you would have seen on your preliminary one that you received in, it was in November, I believe is when those went out. Tax capacity for the last five years, as you are all aware likely, that we have seen significant curves, we've overdoubled our tax capacity growth in the past five years. Currently, just under $30 million of tax capacity. That has changed significantly in both residential, which has doubled since 2021, 2022 pay year. But the commercial industrial one is what we've seen a lot of increase on. We've quadrupled that in the past five years, which is helpful for the residential side of things, that they are not burdening or bearing all of the weight of the tax levy, which I think has been noted by individuals on this council and past councils that I've worked with, that it's very heavily weighted on the residential side of things, and it is starting to be a little more evened out in Dayton overall. So that is good news. Tax levy compared to tax capacity, the black line is the tax capacity number. I mentioned this before, but the difference between the bar on the bottom and the line up top is what the tax rate ends up being. So if you look back in 2019, 2020, those were about 50%. That's about what our tax rate was back in that timeframe. As you look at it now, it's about a third of the way up there, which is about what our tax rate is right now, which is 35.394%. The different bars on there depend on where the levy is going to. Most of them were debt service a few years ago. Those two now dropped off significantly. Only have $210,000 of debt service levy that we do now, and the rest is mostly general fund operations. Impact on homeowners, this is what you should see if your property did not change value from 2025 to 2026. That's probably a very minute number of people. I understand that. I think the average increase was like 1 point something percent this year in the city of Dayton. So you probably will see a slight increase in your taxes, but that is based on the valuation of your home, not based on the fact that the city is taxing more dollars. And we are, tax rate is the exact same as it was last year in '26 for '25. And so you should see no change if your valuation did not change from the city of Dayton's portion only. I cannot again speak for the county, the school district, or anybody else. This is just some more five-year historical data. That's good to know. I did note this earlier, on the right-hand side graph, you did see that the rate is almost 50%. That's payable 2022. Now it's around 35.395 or 394%. The left-hand graph shows the difference between what the capacity change was and the tax levy change. These are not one-to-one ratios. However, they are very closely related. So if the red bar on the right side is the same height as the bar on the left side, then the typically tax rate stays very close or the same. If there's a big difference, as you can see in 2023, there's a large difference between those two. That's where you see the tax levy or the tax rate decrease happen between '22 and '23 is because of so much more capacity and really levying a small amount of dollars. And then that should be known about that year, is we transferred some money from one fund in from debt and had it expire. And so we didn't actually have to increase it by anything to get more dollars for operations. We just moved levy dollars from debt into operations. So that's why there was such a significantly low increase in tax levy that year.
There was a lot of stars that lined up that that year.
That, a lot of stars lined up, yeah. But that helped with a large decrease of the tax rate, which I think a lot of residents would be thankful for. 2026 tax rate comparisons, I did get the preliminary numbers from Kennebun County. We are one of the lower ones. If I would have sat back here five years ago when I started here, we would have been one of the higher ones. So I don't, that's again, something that related to just tax capacity or changes or how things work, but we are one of the lower ones. We have significantly stayed about the same again. Cities that we've always been compared to Rogers, Champlin, probably those two are the main two we get compared to often. Those have increased every year in the past three years or two years. Corcoran took a huge increase this year. I don't know what's going on at Corcoran, but they got a large increase going on, so they jumped up quite a bit.
They're a 2029 thing that we're looking at, that's what they're hitting right now.
Well, we're five years behind, so we'll get there, or three years behind, whenever that number is. The biggest thing for me was that Maple Grove is, did go up this year, which I was very surprised on, because it seems to me Maple Grove has an unlimited source of money, but that's just me.
Plymouth got it from them this year, apparently.
Key changes, general fund revenues, we had an increase in state aid dollars that were received. Key changes in the general fund expenditures, we had one additional staff, we have restructured fire department working schedule, two part-time public works employees shifted to one full-time public works employee in 2026. Otherwise, they were just increases of generic historical trends, like everyone sees, whether you go to grocery store, go to Home Depot, or go to Walmart, you're going to pay more for what you paid the same thing for last year. And the other main thing was increasing union negotiated contracts. And for revenues, these aren't nearly as fun to look at as most people, but the pie graph on the left kind of shows where their money comes from. About 75% of our revenue comes from property taxes, and the rest come from various other points, whether that's intergovernmental revenue, licenses, permits. Most of those licenses and permits are related to building activity. And then interest in earnings as well has been consistently about $80,000. So I think in total, I think last year, I don't want to, this year so far, I think we're about $750,000 of interest a year in the year earned so far. That's an impressive amount of money that's able to come back into the city to be able to help fund operations and help fund capital improvements. So that should be something we should be proud of. And I think I said, I think it's just sort of 800 grand, and that's through the end of November. General fund expenditures, nothing too crazy to write home about. Ones that stick out hard are the patrol, and that's related to union contract negotiations. Central services, that's kind of a little bit of an anomaly, because what we did this year is we took everyone's individual line items for electric utilities, gas utilities, postage, basically things that the department heads had no control over and put it into central services, because they have no control over it anyways. They can't control the electricity, they can't control, can't control the heat, and so it's all into central services because it's just one bucket of money that pays for it anyways. It's hard to keep the department heads on the hic, on the ticket for, okay, your electrics go, went too high, you need to shut the lights off. It's kind of hard to operate the city like that. So we decided that, as department heads and myself, we decided that would be easier just to keep it in one bucket so that everyone has a shared aspect of that. Those are kind of the two main big changes that happened. Any questions on the two of those?
I, I have no issue with it all going into one bucket, but I'm hoping that we still take a look at it to make sure there isn't something like a leak somewhere that we're not.
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yeah, it will get lost. Yeah, it just means that I'm looking at it probably more scrutiny than I'm looking at purpose and say, hey, change what's going on over there.
Oh, yeah. It's not like a budget thing. It's just like, I don't, I want to make sure that it's still not getting lost in the whole shuffle that we might not have like, hey, the door isn't shutting tight, and so we're losing like.
And those will be reviewed based on our, you know, accounting technician looks at every bill, and she'll say, oh, this bill's way higher. She'll say that to me and say, this bill's way higher than it was last month. I don't know why.
What happened?
It might be. And then I'll reach out to the department head and say what's going on, whether that's in the fire department or in the public works, whoever it is.
Whatever.
It won't be lost by any means, but it's just easier for for tracking instead of looking at the department head to say, manage every line item that you have no control over.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. 2026 utility fund budget, someone hit on these really quickly just because these are something that we have to approve as well as part of this. We looked at these already. Nothing major change within water fund. We are looking at a 4% increase. I know they're really small and really hard to see, and I apologize, I can't make them any bigger without losing the entire screen, but basically there's majorly no changes. Water is really dependent on what is happening in the world, as in weather. Two years ago, we had our highest sales ever, and we thought it was going to go through the roof. And then last year, we had a wet year, and we didn't sell any water at all, and everyone's looking at me like, why did you budget so much money? And then, there is an offset always for expenditures, so if there, we aren't pumping the water to the ground, there is no expenditure for electricity, there's no expenditure for the DNR, there's no expenditure for, you know, repairs or whatnot. So then those typically come out in the wash anyways. It's very similar to inspections and building permits, is that we don't have any building permits, we typically don't pay for inspections. So they're kind of one in the same. If I budget for a ton of revenues on permits, and there's no permits to come in, we don't typically pay as much on expenditures for the inspections department than we would if there was a ton of permits. Same thing with the sewer fund. Again, very stagnant. The sewer fund is a little easier to guess and check because it's based on an average, and those are taken in March of every year, and that's based on your January and February usage. And so those two usages end up being the usage for the year. If you use less, let's say you vacation in your cabin all summer long, you pay the lesser of the value of your usage in March, or whenever you use that, those two months could be billed bi-monthly. So it's never going to be higher than that number, but it could be lower. And those are obviously based on the fact of your usages, so going to feel like charging people sewer if you're not going to be using it, but we need to charge people sewer if they're going to be using it for their normal operations, which would typically be January and February is their normal day-to-day things that they're doing.
You mentioned in, might have been the narrative for the long-term plan, but since this is essentially a pass-through to the Met Council.
Yes.
I thought there was some concern about increasing rates, that the Met Council was going to be increasing sewer rates. And I guess my question is, are we keeping track of that, and are we adjusting ours accordingly?
Yes, so we are keeping track of those things. I did not see as large of increase, so it is one year delayed. So if they have an increase, they set their budgets, and I don't know how they do this, but they set their budgets in the middle of the previous year. So I already know what we're going to pay in 2026 for the whole year, and that's what's in this budget. And that's what I base our revenues off of. But we might say and hear an increase, okay, Met Council's going to increase their rates. Well, that won't happen technically till 2026 for 2027 year of operations that we see. I don't know how they budget everything, because everything, I know exactly what I'm going to pay Met Council, we're going to pay Met Council next year, no matter what. We could flush the toilet 5,000 times extra this next year, and we pay no more dollars to Met Council than we did this year, based on what they're, they give me as a number. So as we do the budget every year, I look and see, what is Met Council going to charge us, and make sure that that keeps up with our rates. It's a little convoluted and weird, and I don't know how they do their budgeting, to be honest with you. I've asked that question every time they give me the number, and I go, how do you know what you're going to charge me next year? And they say, this is what we're going to charge you. So that, that went up 100 grand, yeah, but then we also have many more homes that are going to come in and probably offset that $100,000 increase. I would propose that increase will continue to go up and maybe more in 2027 if their rates are going to go up for their charges per 1,000 gallons, which they'll set in '26, but honestly not charge us until '27. So it's a little delayed. But great question.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. This is the utility rates that were proposed. I've already showed this to the council. There's nothing changed since October that we talked about. We're at dead center of the pack. We understand that our water is more expensive, but most of these communities around us are already either built up and funding their services or not. One thing we do have going for us is that we don't have a wastewater treatment plant, like some of these communities up here do, and those can fluctuate those rates significantly. So like Monticello might have cheap rates right now, but if they have a wastewater treatment plant they got to put in, I guarantee that rate's going to double, because that's just what's going to happen. So we're always trying to be right in the middle of pack. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. That's always been the goal, at least from staff's perspectives. 4% water increase, water rate increase, 1% for sewer. I try to pride myself on being as best we can and fiscally responsible for 5%. That's typically what I try to keep it to, because we all know that increases happen, but a 5% increase seems reasonable for a total bill, because the resident doesn't care who they pay, they're going to pay 5% more. And so I try to keep that cognizant when I'm putting the budgets together, where can we adjust things as best we can? There have been years in the past that have done a 5% increase on water and zero on sewer, because I know that their water rates needed and the sewer rates don't need it, so. I guess I'll stand for any questions, if any. Otherwise, it is a public hearing, mayor, and we'll have to make sure we open that and then close.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yep.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to this? Anybody online?
Pause for dramatic effect. There's anybody online that'd like to speak for the public hearing for TNT? Please raise your hand. I am not seeing anything there.
Okay, I'll close the meeting.
We'll discuss the rest later on the meeting, but after the TNT first, thank you.
All right, we are on item O. Somehow we already managed to get a half hour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one vacancy on the EDA for a term ending in 2025. We advertised on the city's website, as well as the city's social media. We have one applicant. Deadline to respond was December 1st. So Tim Hunter was the applicant. He currently serves as chair of the EDA.
All right. Well, I have, so I have a little bit of a question. Tim was recently appointed to the Champlin City Council, is he not?
Yes, yes, sir.
Congratulations. But I kind of have an issue with someone who is on another city's city council being on our EDA. For example, Greco just came, and they were debating between us and Rogers, right? And they happened to choose us. What if the next kind of big thing is choosing between us and Champlin? And then this puts Tim in a really awkward position, because he now has a conflict of interest, and would not be able to fully participate on either side, because here's this, you know, organization deciding between us. So it's not, I have no, nothing against Tim Hutner. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with a council member from another city being on our EDA. And I don't know, I don't know what to do with that, because there's only, it's not like there's another applicant, so I don't know.
If I could just add some little bit of clarity, so, and I apologize for incident this earlier, the EDA consists of seven members, two of them are council members that are appointed to the EDA, and then five members appointed by the council. It's not required that you be a resident of Dayton, you do have to have a business interest within Dayton, so.
Yeah.
Going back to, you know, why do we have an EDA member that's on the Champlin City Council, because they're a resident of Champlin rather than Dayton?
Well, and the resident issue is, I have no problem with the resident issue, it's the, like I said, like the Greco situation, had that been us and Champlin instead of us and Rogers, that could have been really awkward and messy. Now, this is, I believe he's appointed until May, correct, and there's a special election?
That is correct.
And seven, the EDA has seven members, none of our other groups have seven members, so a question I was just putting out there is, would it be possible to postpone this appointment, and possibly have, instead of two city council members voting, only have one city council member as a voting member, so there's still an odd number of voting members on the EDA?
I think we can do that.
And then revisit this in May? Is that possible?
I think there's a state statute that covers that.
I don't know.
So mayor, members of council, the current bylaws for the EDAs write that you can have five to seven members, specifically for the reason of, we had one member who dropped off, we had only six members, we could not technically operate as the EDA because of that reason, so we updated the bylaws to say five to seven members. So whether that's a, you'd have to have, any member on the EDA would be a voting member, so there's no way to do what you're requesting, because we're meant to, however.
But we could do six for...
You could still operate with six, because the EDA bylaws state five to seven members, and that was specifically updated related to the situation we had, I think it was two years ago, but I could be wrong on timing.
And then we could revisit it in May, once we no longer have this potential conflict of interest.
So I specifically asked him that question, and he did say he would abstain. To my knowledge, we haven't seen that, it's possible we'll see that. My concern is, is that Tim has done a lot to push this group, to move this group.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't, I don't want to lose that, but, and it is hard enough to get EDA volunteers. In fact, I think the last opening we had for quite a while, didn't we?
Well, we had an opening earlier in the year where we had, I think, three applicants for one position.
So if I'm the only other, if I'm the only person with this concern, then obviously, but I just, it was, and again, it's not about Tim, has nothing to do with the person, it has to do with this idea of that conflict of interest, and then we lose...
I think the situation is, you know, could occur, you know, it doesn't seem to happen very often, but it certainly could, and I think that we would expect him to acknowledge that conflict of interest and step aside. So I, I mean, I think that that concern comes up with all of us in one way or another, and we just have to be doing the right thing. He hasn't shown that he won't, so I guess, you know, I would make the motion to approve Tim Hutner's removal for this term.
Yeah, I will step, mayor of council, I did have a conversation with Tim Hutner, because I think it's important that he knows, I stated my point to him. I think it becomes very difficult when you have somebody on both boards, because of the fact that you could have items that come up that you have no idea on, and not, and he wouldn't abstain from any votes, but now you've lost a voice of your business, businesses in town that you now have, that you respect and want to know their opinion, that can only give you their opinion. And so what value does that position bring to have that? I tried to do some different analogies as best as I could, and it would be similar to having, I own Bear Paint as the company, I own that company, and I'm also on the board of Home Depot. If there comes a conflict between what's the price of paint in the store, which area am I on? Am I on the board for Home Depot, or am I on the paint owner company? And so it just comes, like, you now want to have on both sides, but now you've lost your voice on both sides, because you can't be on the...
You can't be on either side.
You can't be on either side, because you can't be the owner, nor can you be the board member. I use that as a, maybe that's a larger example of it, but I tried to paint a, try to picture of like, what does it look like? And I've been open and honest with Tim, that it has nothing to do with Tim himself, it could be any one of you as well, being on Champlin's EDA. It just seems very...
You know, when I heard this, that was my knee-jerk reaction too, except, as I've talked to people, so the worst conflict he could have was, he's picking sides. That's the worst choice. Either way, one of his EDAs is going to get this company. I just think he's done so much for our EDA that, and like I said, he said he was willing to step aside if the situation come up. I can see something like that happening between us and Rogers far more likely than us and Champlin.
I think it's also, yeah, important to note that there are seven members, like it's not, like he solely is making all of the decisions.
Yep.
So I will second your motion, David.
And is that for the six-year term?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it's clarified for the record.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. On item P.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item P is amendment to an interim use permit for a home extended business located at 15430 Brockton Lane. So this, this is an IEP that was approved in February of 2025 for a home extension business for a driveway contractor. One of the conditions of approval was to require that the north driveway be removed, and the intention of this is that by removing the north driveway, it provides a little bit of space between noise-generated activity and the neighbor's home. In, in the reality of how that, I'm sorry, so the area that was intended to be removed is the red area, and the conditions that it be removed by the end of this year. The property owner had made some improvements in this blue area, which is kind of a hill up through here. The result of operating on the south side of the property and getting up this hill is that the, for the trucks to get up the hill, trucks are noisier going on the south driveway than they are on the north driveway. The applicant is requesting that that item be removed, that requirement to remove the north driveway, allowing it to stay. Also, while we're at the point of, in the process of considering amendments, the applicant is also asking to extend the IEP for a total of five years, whereas it was approved for And this is the north driveway that would be, that is required to be removed by the end of this year. This was, or I should say, the planning commission held a public hearing on December 3rd. The commission had a two-two vote, which nullifies any recommendation, so for both the removal of the north driveway as well as the extension of the IEP for a total of five years. So there's no recommendation from the planning commission. Questions for staff?
So that allows a circular route, if that's left, right? Instead of having to go up that nasty...
Yeah, so those would be circular route.
The, and the planning commission, I think, at least on that one, didn't want to take a position, because they didn't want to counter what we had requested in the past. So they just didn't.
Yes, correct. So this recommendation was from the city council, not, the recommendation to remove the driveway was a requirement of the city council, not of the planning commission.
I have a question, because this came up a while ago, and I was trying to find my notes, but wasn't there some sort of a issue with how close the pavement was, or there wasn't a permit, there was issues with where that driveway is existing, is anyway?
Yes, so there's questions of where is the property line, how close the north driveway is to the property line? And I believe it is ten, at least a 10-foot difference between the two.
And what is the setback requirement?
To get the time, nobody knew what the answer was.
Yeah, because I remember there being some sort of issue, we had, we talked about this one in length, if I'm remembering correctly.
Now it's, yeah.
I got a couple of questions for the applicant and the neighbor, both are here.
Do I have any more questions for staff?
No.
Okay. The applicant want to come forward?
Can we get questions from the crowd here yet?
Yeah, we will.
Can you do it now?
We'll get questions to the applicant first.
My question would be, and I actually came out and looked at this last spring, summer. I'm guessing the driveway's not been moved yet.
I put the, first I went and talked to the neighbor, asked him, how's it been? Then I went and found out that it's been, he'll speak for himself, I won't speak for him. But then I looked at its benefit for the road, and if I rip it out, it's done, so I applied for this. No, I have not ripped it out yet, because I wanted to come ask, because one thing, you caught me really off-guard, and you put me on the back of my heels, and you were right, is that you asked, is it 10 feet? I could not answer you yes or no. It is 10 feet, it always has been 10 feet, I just couldn't answer you that day, because I didn't measure it. So out of respect, I wanted to come in ahead of my notes to say to you is that, I looked at the ordinances for what the city was, and it's five feet, but when you look at agricultural, I learned that night, and I was wrong, that it's 10 feet. But I was still in compliance the whole time.
Yep.
In fact, it's only 10 feet for about maybe 20 feet, and then it goes up and away farther. So as it gets, you know, up the hill, it goes more and more up to probably almost 15 to 18 feet at the very top.
Okay, so the question, and then the next issue would be, if we require you to take that out, how are you going to take that out, now that the ground is starting to freeze?
I will take it out if you need to, I will bring in bigger machinery.
Okay.
Because I want to make sure I'm following what the rules are, but when I take that out, it's going to disturb way, you know, I do want to apologize to the neighbor, and I have before, is when that was put in, one thing more that, for the city council is, you said it looks paved, and I, in my head, I'm going, it's not paved! It's been patched with pieces of asphalt, piece of asphalt, and that summer that when I was doing that with pieces, the big roller that I brought back and forth, that is what was bothering the neighbor, because it vibrated the ground and made noise. Now, I'm not doing that anymore, but if it needs to be removed, because I'm told I have to, I have to comply, I don't have a choice. But I wanted to say, for coming in front, it makes more sense, because I don't have to back up as much, if I keep it. So for me, the investment of coming in front of John and Hayden and asking this, is to basically make the business a better, you know, a better business. I mean, so that it's less impact to the environment around.
So when you do this, it's just a full circle?
A full circle, so then I don't have to...
Then the other thing.
Right, I don't want to have to back up, back up, back up, and try to get back up.
I understand. Beeping carries for miles.
I understand, and it's simple to do it that way, and it caused, I mean, the driveway where it is, it caused issues with the neighbor, and now I'm going to say, if the neighbor's fine with it, you, I see you put up the fence.
That was a requirement asked of me, and I did it right away, I cleaned up first, it was required of me. I mean, I have tried to do everything the right way. I've been told by the city council, and I was also told by the planning commission last week, you're not a business that we like, or the piece, I don't remember the words, because I'm nervous right now. But I've tried to do everything right. I came to the city, I asked what to do, they said, don't do anything, it's really not a big deal unless there's a problem. So then, that was staffing piece that that came through. So now I did the right thing, as soon as something goes wrong, I come in front of you, I try to do the right thing each time, because, one, my name's on it, and that's important to me to do things right. So I wanted to apologize that, yeah, you set me back on my heels, I should have known it for agricultural, but I don't do a lot of agricultural pieces like that. So I've learned, and then I've also made sure that I was doing it right, I did it right in the first place.
And all your treasures on the north side of that fence are now on your side, correct?
None, nothing's on the north side, it's just wood chips.
It wasn't that way before.
Right, and some of that stuff was my own personal stuff, because I did scrapping on the side, which had nothing to do with the business itself.
No, no idea.
But, no, I moved everything over to the other side to respect that, and I'm putting wood chips there to try to keep down the stuff on the ground, and allow moisture to be in the ground. It'll take a lot more, if I go to rip this out, it wouldn't be wise to do for the ground, but this time of year would not be the year to take it out, because it's going to take ground with it and the frost, and, and I also put down a blanket in there, so that it does, for deteriorating the ground, so I didn't have to put as much base. So there's a layer of felt, then the base, and then the patches of asphalt.
So you're talking that, the picture on the right?
Correct.
That's where the felt is now?
Underneath the patches.
Yeah, because the felt wasn't there before.
Correct.
Now indirectly, what you're telling me is, you didn't plan on taking the driveway out anyway?
No, I never put the asphalt, I've never did anything to the driveway since I've seen you.
Okay.
I haven't put any more asphalt down. The bothering of the rollers was what bothered, you know, making the vibrating of the ground. That was all done the year before. So this is two years old, nothing's been done to it. So I have not added anything to it, changed anything, all I'm asking is, you asked me to remove it, and I didn't change anything to it, and I'm saying, it's really a foolish thing to remove it, because I reduce noise by having it, because now going up that other higher spot, I'm hitting higher pre-ems that are high, and it's roaring. And I'll be honest, safety for the trucks, if something goes wrong, I'm going down that hill backwards, but that's not anybody's problem but mine, I guess.
I hope the truck's better than that.
You're driving a manual with 50 ton, so anything can go wrong, I try to plan for it.
That's mainly the question I have, is, I mean, he's made an effort with the fence.
I followed the right rules, I just...
Whether or not the fence is good enough, I guess we'll find out shortly.
Any other questions?
And I want to do the right thing, so anything you guys have asked, and, you know...
All right, thank you.
My name is Darrell Zare, I live on the north side of the property. I have a procedural question. Last year, we had the hearing, and before the vote, you announced that you're related to John.
Yep.
So you didn't vote. Why did you not recuse yourself for the hearing? From my knowledge of Roberts Order Parliamentary Procedure, you shouldn't have been involved in any of the influencing the other council members.
Yep.
Why did you not do that?
This time? Because I've talked...
Well, that last time too. Why did you not recuse yourself?
Didn't vote, I don't remember if I had much in the discussion.
Yeah, you did, you did.
Okay, I can't answer that.
You contradicted me a couple times.
Okay.
And you have a tremendous effect on everybody here, you have an important job. You have an effect on the council members' opinions, their vote, and I feel like you're related to the applicant.
I, we found out a year ago, we are cousins, yes.
And that was before this happened.
Yes.
You should have recused yourself.
I did from the vote, and this time I'm not going to, because I've talked to enough people that believe that that was, for lack of a better term, anal. I do not have a financial interest in this whatsoever, I only found out I'm related...
You're a relative.
What?
You're a relative.
True.
You can't get beyond that, it's a conflict of interest.
I can get beyond that if it was a financial...
Well, you say you can, but the perception to me, at least, is that you're not.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
Usually with the family relation, if there's a conflict of interest, it usually only extends to immediate family members, like spouse, or sibling, or a child. A cousin isn't, isn't an automatic...
What do you mean by usually?
Well...
Is it not always?
No.
Not always, no, I mean, there are different ways that a conflict of interest can exist.
If it was important enough to acknowledge that you weren't going to be voting, I'm wondering why you did not recuse yourself for the hearing?
I guess I can't answer that from back then, but I can tell you that I...
I think that's very unfair to me.
Okay, well, I shouldn't have recused myself, that might have been worse for you.
I don't believe it would have been, no.
Okay. Well, so, yeah.
And for what it's worth, it is not always required, where there's, unless there's a statutory conflict of interest, which doesn't exist here, as I understand it.
Isn't it a courtesy?
It's usually, it really comes down to the discretion of the elected official, whether they, whether they feel that they can act objectively. But when it comes to recusing from both the discussion and the vote, that's usually only where there's a statutory conflict of interest established. So if it is possible for a council member to participate in the deliberations and then abstain from the vote, it's just, it really is kind of a case by case.
That's where I kind of put myself at at that point. And like I said, I've talked to enough people now where...
I can understand it not being against the law, but I can't understand it being, being right.
Well, I do represent everybody in the city, including the applicant, and so when you abstain, you do lose that vote. I mean, we just talked about that with the EDA member. Did you have, I was in the impression you had questions for the applicant, not so much?
Pardon me?
Did you have other questions?
Yeah, how do we know where the property line is? The exact property line?
You'd have to have a survey done.
Yeah, you'd have to, it'd be between you guys to get the survey done.
There's, there's yellow stakes that, when I bought my property, I bought it from the gas company, and there's yellow marker stakes in there, and there's a few spots I measured, that driveway was in three, three feet of the yellow stake, not everywhere, but, but some places. But I don't think the fact that the driveway is here or there or whatever, I thought the reason for moving the driveway to the other side of the converted shed to their equipment shop was to give me some peace and quiet.
That's what it was for, yeah, absolutely.
So to argue that it's going to be quieter by keeping it open than it would be to put it on the other side, there's 10 acres there, make a circle on the other side and figure it out. Because it's loud, and when that truck goes down that driveway, the paintings, the pictures on the north side, or on the south side of my house shake. side, or on the south side of my house shake. That won't happen if he's going down on the other side of the, of the building.
So I think, Darrell, what you're telling us is that the fence is not good enough. It didn't solve the problem?
No.
Correct.
It's not a sound barrier, it's a fence. I can't see the lower six feet.
It's basically visual.
What, pardon me?
I say, it's covering the visual side of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the evergreens are going to cover it.
It's doing nothing for the sound.
Okay.
I mean, nothing that, the, the spruce trees do more for the sound than, than that, but they're thinned out because of the placement of the driveway.
Yeah. The lower branches are all going to die off and under the evergreen, so that's, the fence certainly covers the visual...
That helps that, yeah.
The visual side of it.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm happy about that.
Correct. And all the treasures on the north side that were on your side are now gone, from what he's saying, Mike?
Yeah, and we judged that the day you were there, by where those yellow stakes are...
And you're, you're happy with that?
Huh?
You're, you're okay with that part of it?
With what part?
All the, all the treasures that are on, that used to be on that side are now cleaned up.
I don't see any on, on this side of the fence.
On your side. Okay.
But, you know, I don't know, I, I haven't looked at it. I haven't gone on the other side of the fence to determine whether the fence is actually the property line, or if it's set a little bit on his side, or a little bit on my side. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But those stakes are, are legal stakes. And it's very simple to measure from them to the edge of that tar that's going down that hill. But regardless, the, that driveway was supposed to be moved to give me some peace and quiet.
Yes, I, I don't disagree.
And all of a sudden, we're talking a whole different issue here.
Well...
And I think that's, that problem still stands.
Plus, it's now winter time.
Huh?
Plus, it's now winter time.
I'm not saying it has to come out today.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it could come out on the ground thaw. I don't think there's a lot of frost in the ground right now.
No, there's not.
Is there a question, Darrell, if, you know, and I think all of you would know this, is there a considerable difference between the noise when trucks are on the south side of the building versus the north side?
Huge, huge difference. Well, the, I'm, my bedroom is 60 feet from that driveway.
Mm-hmm.
On its north side. I mean, you can't, I don't care if you idle down or what, you, you still feel it. And if you're unfortunate enough to be, like, I'm an on-call veterinarian, if I'm working at night, and I'm trying to get some sleep during the day, it's shaking me in my bed. I mean, I, at least that was my understanding, that, that was why that driveway was decided, and I thought it was agreed upon, that that was going to be moved to the south. And I know there's arguments that circle driveway is better, but, but make a circle on the other side of, of the building then. I mean, he's in that business anyhow. I think it's pretty simple to do. I think I could do it with a Skidster myself, and I'm a veterinarian.
Mayor, do you have any more questions for the resident? Otherwise, we probably have a conversation within the council and staff, I guess.
Yeah.
Stephanie? I thought she had something to say.
I have a question for John.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do the applicant want to come back up, or? Well...
Do you have any more questions for the applicant? I think it's just...
Well, I assume you wanted to answer.
Time between the council and staff, hopefully have more questions, I guess.
Okay. Hold on a second.
Council movement, sorry.
John, we were saying, or, when we're going out and looking at the property, what are we measuring from? So like, if the property line, is it...
We're not measuring.
So we're saying, the applicant says that the property, it's 10 feet, and we're saying it's 10 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes? Is that what I'm understanding?
Without the benefit of a survey? Like, there's no way to confirm any measurements?
There is survey markers, though.
Okay. But we're not, typically, we're not measuring from property stakes.
We are not. The city doesn't use property stakes, it's a surveying company, and it would be a civil issue between the two neighbors typically, is how we've always handled that as a city, whether that's this property, or one on the south side of town, or whatever. It'd be a civil issue between the two property owners of where the stakes are at, and how what the length of distance is. But if they have a certified survey that's been done by a surveyor, then we will utilize that to figure out, here's exactly where it should be from setbacks.
Okay.
But if we have issues, typically rely on Hennepin County's map. However, we have to acknowledge that this map is already off, and we do have to be served with this process.
So we can neither confirm or deny if the driveway...
We can probably note it from the fence line, because it physically exists today.
But is the fence line on the property line?
But he put the fence line, and so how, and how do you know if it wasn't the property line, you put the fence up? I can drink, you know, like, not on purpose, but you could really be far off with your fence line if you didn't have a survey done.
Sure. That's what we're asking, Arizona's other headers, and that is correct.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to make sure, like, what data points we have, and like, what we are speculating, which is not a negative thing on any side. I'm just, I guess, trying to wrap my head around. Then I guess while I'm talking, oh, you have another question?
No, I was going to see if the applicant could explain.
Oh.
But did you have other question for staff, or?
No.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
You want to come up? Name and address again? How did you determine the property line for the fence?
When the fence, oh, if you ask me, my name and address first. So I named John Herbus, address 15430 Brockton Lane. And so, to answer your question, Hayden was out there. We put a measuring tape from the fence. The fence is on my side. I want to make sure I'm respecting Darrell, as I asked, you know, what are we looking at to put the fence? I went right up to the existing fence that was there. I also pulled a permit out, and that's been looked at as well, that it was put in the right area.
The fence permit?
What?
The fence?
The fence is permitted? Yeah.
Oh.
So then Hayden would have gone, or we would have gone out and said...
Metro West.
Metro West did.
So how do they know where the property line is? You're smiling at me.
We have to make certain assumptions that things are correct, but ultimately, it's...
But I have been working with Darrell and trying to make a good communication.
Sure. If, you know, this is for anyone, you know, you build a fence on the wrong side of the property, like, property line, that's your problem to solve with the neighbor. And we can't confirm that a fence gets built on the right, correct property line.
So at this point, if there is a question, it is either the property owners have the right to hire a survey company to mark out the property line. And then, at that point, once an official survey has been done, if it is found, and the fence is on the wrong side, then does the city get involved, or is the city still not involved at that point?
It's, no, no.
Okay.
Did that fence permit, so when we do a fence permit, what, how old was the fence permit?
It was last year. I took it right...
Oh, you took it out?
I had, I took it out to put the fence in, because it's the right thing to do.
So when we were having a discussion about this, I, I've not...
He doesn't have an issue with the fence.
No, I don't think you do. The, the question is, is if the driveway could be there in the first place? So if the driveway is too close to the property line, it's got to come out no matter what. Like, it doesn't matter if it's on which side, and so...
You know, we have a agreement saying it needs to be moved?
Question mark, maybe?
We do have an...
We do right now, but after this item, it would...
The request from the applicant is to be able to remove that requirement.
I understand.
To keep the drive.
That is what the request is here for.
But he is right, right, this time, it is a requirement.
Yes.
To answer the other question is, from the fence line out to the road, I used a measuring tape. It wasn't a trick one, and Hayden watched it. So that's why the yellow lines were drawn in one of the pictures, to show that it always has been. I put it in right and didn't even know it. And so, I was just trying to make sure that I wasn't towards the branches of the, the roots of the trees, and trying to respect that before. So it naturally came out that I did the right thing in the first place. So it does meet the requirements from the beginning. I just couldn't answer Scott when he says, "Am I 10 feet off?" I couldn't answer that, a benefit, yes, it's 10 feet off, because I didn't know.
Can you address the comment that you could put that turnaround loop in somewhere else on your property?
The property, the way things are actually scaling, it's going towards the wetland on the other middle of it. And so, it actually, for the different heights, so we see where the tree lines and all that, that's all gets in wet in there. And I only have the ability that it starts going into the septic. So right where the blue is, to the side of that, all the septic is back into this piece right there. If you want me to go up there, I'll show you, make...
Please.
Is that what you'd like?
Yeah, please.
So, right through here, the septic comes out, and the septic is all right in here. And so, this starts getting lower, and it doesn't do me any good, because I'm going uphill the whole way. When you're driving a rig, and it's hitting high RPMs, it's going to be louder than going down the hill in neutral with no, no gas on at all. And I don't have to then, so, I would love, if I could make things better, I would love to, but it's, you know, I'm going to have to back up if I have to back up.
Oh, yeah, that, that's a good point that I just wanted to reiterate. So by removing the north driveway, which is the picture to the right, and going up the south driveway, that's the picture to the left, you're, you're going up a higher grade. So the truck is going to be noisier going uphill than would be going up a gentler slope on the north driveway. So part of the question is, is by removing the north driveway, and depending on the steeper south driveway, is that going to decrease the noise from the truck?
How many trucks a day are, are you running through? I know it varies with the work you're doing.
One going, coming in. We'll have one or two going out in the morning, and then the afternoon, one or two coming back in. You know, and I kind of wanted to make a joke, is, why my business is not liked, is, it's just dirt. It's, you know, I don't, I don't have nothing odd that's not, wouldn't have been on a farm site anyways, you know? Because the only place I did put any asphalt is, you know, you have a little bit left, you don't want to throw a ton away, I put it on the road. Maybe I should have tried to do it all at once versus trying to do patches and try to talk to my neighbor more.
So I think this is brought up at the original one, but you, so, and you just read it, so you got two going out in the morning, and two coming in in the afternoon?
Yeah. Oh, you know, but there might be one person that runs back to grab something. I don't want to make the picture look gold and perfect.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
And I did go talk to Darrell, because I want good relationships. And, you know, I said, "How's it going this year?" "You're here to witness what I'm saying." As he says, "Better." And then I said, "Well, I found out that I have to take the road out, and Darrell, you were surprised I had to take the road out, but I told you the truth why I was coming here, is to keep things so that..." I want to be...
What do you mean, "I was surprised"? I don't think you should be putting words in there.
Well, I did say that, yes. I did say that, but I want to keep things respectful.
Let's, uh, let's, yeah, stop the back and forth.
Yes. I apologize. I'm already going to hear it from, from my, my daughter and my wife.
Okay. Where are you guys at?
Here's where I am on this deal. We talked about this already. The requirement was to move the road. Apparently, that wasn't a big enough requirement, because it isn't done yet. I think Darrell is okay if we reiterate the requirement sometime next May or June, rather than going through the extra expense to get it out now, because it's going to cost more money to get it out now. Some of that dirt that comes out of it now possibly could go out, and you just close it, I guess is what you would do. You had mentioned before that you could fill in some of the, the low ground with, I think it was 40 or 50, two truckloads of dirt, to make the, to make the circle in the other spot.
The other side?
Yep.
The new, the new side, yeah.
Yep. Apparently, maybe that's what you got to do. I mean, I...
But I, if I would have known it was 10 feet on that day, which I couldn't answer for you, and I knew the ordinance, which, everything was done correctly, would you have changed your mind? The reason I came, I came back and applied for this before it was due to take it out. So I wasn't trying to play a switch and cat-mouse game, because I'm just trying to be upfront right away.
I guess, I guess the only other solution to me is, is if, if you go through the survey, and the road is legally where it's supposed to be, or, or can be, I should say, then we got nothing to talk about.
Well, and that's, yeah, and Darrell is here to say, is, when I put the fence in, I asked him, "Is this right where it needs to be?", and that I pulled the permit for it, so I've done everything properly that I can.
Scott, can I challenge you for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I don't know that I, I agree with the statement that there's nothing left to talk about, because we still have the issue of approving this business as it sits like this, with the road, or the driveways, or the road, I don't know what you call it, this close to the neighbor's property, is still causing him a noise nuisance.
No, I don't disagree.
So whether the driveway is okay to be there or not, I think is not the issue for me. The issue for me is, even if it's 10 feet off the property line, and that's all fine, running a business at this residence is causing an issue and a nuisance to the neighbor. And so, I guess my feelings would not have changed, to be honest. If you had said, "Yep, it's compliant, it's 10 feet off, and we're good," I still would have said, "Well, you're driving your neighbor crazy..."
And I...
"...at his home, because you are running trucks at your home." And if we're going to allow that to happen, I think, like, again, that's an issue for me. And so, I don't, my feelings haven't changed from what they were when we were here last time. That it's, it's a nuisance to your neighbor. I want you to run your business, I want you to be successful, but I don't want that to be at the expense of the people that live next to you. So for me, I stand exactly where I did before, that the road or the driveway, whatever it is, I don't know, needs to come out, doesn't need to, whatever it is, like, not to be used for the business, and then it needs to go on the other side of the property to give distance between the neighbor and you. And that, I think that granting an extension for the time, I think that I also stand on not extending that, because I think we need to make sure that we're still not causing a nuisance to our neighbor.
Well, it's not being used at all till spring. Right. Just, you know, I mean, it's not being, no trucks are moving, we're done for the year.
I bet he's tickled pink. I bet you're tickled pink about there not being any trucks till, yeah, till spring.
But it's too bad, because we don't spend that much time off the yard. This time of the year, really here, the summer and spring.
What months is this operating?
Road restrictions come off.
Is it, it's-
You know, that's pretty much when we start, and then as soon as it starts to snow, we could be sometimes done by Halloween. And I, you know, it's just not-
See, so you're, if the-
I agree with Stephanie's stand there. I mean, it is causing a problem for the neighbor, and it is a, it is a black tile business next to a residential area. And we gave some terms five, six, seven months ago, and we still are not living up to all of them. I mean, he's made effort, I don't disagree with that, but it's not good enough.
I do want to make sure, because he has met every requirement, just to make sure that's clear, he has met every requirement that we've had, technically, he's not over it, because if we still say no, and the council decides that they want to say no, then his job is to, in the next twenty-one days, remove that driveway, because that's what he's required to do, so I just want to make sure it's clear that we aren't, he's technically not a violation or anything yet.
Right.
Might cost him more money, but that's been his choice, not ours. So, just want to make sure that that's clear for the record, that he's done nothing wrong, he's followed everything he's been told to do so far, and not a violation of that IP.
So, my views also have not changed. And I just want to say, I have nothing against the business, it's the location of the business that I've always had an issue with. The business itself is fine, happy to have you in Dayton, just not here. And in fact, after you, the whole thing came through the first time, I have had other business owner, other, well, resident business owner who has a similar business in an industrial area, who's like, it would've been, I could've gotten a cheaper mortgage with better loan terms if I would've bought a house and done what this person did, and instead, I felt like I followed all the rules, and why did I bother following all the rules when I have to? And I was like, I, because, because you shouldn't have a business like this in, in this area. It's not agricultural and it's not residential, and it clearly says, the number one requirement is all home occupations shall be clearly incidental, and this is not incidental. This is the purpose of this location, and it should not change the character, and it should not result in incompatibility or disturbance to the surrounding residential uses, and it does. And so, my opinion also hasn't changed. I was against it then, I'm against it now, I don't think this is the appropriate spot for it, I'm definitely not going to make it eas, you know, take the driveway requirement off. I'm definitely not extending it, so, that's where I stand. This is not the appropriate place for this business.
I guess I'm left. Well, I, I want to say that we've, every one of these that we've dealt with has been a unique headache in one way or another. We allow this in Dayton, and we're not deciding today whether or not this business is allowed, it's whether or not we remove the requirement to remove, to move or abandon the driveway however that's termed. I will say that I am impressed with the things that you've done. The pictures we saw last go around, that was, that was quite a mess, and you've done a lot of work to clean that up. I'd like you to straighten that one fence post there, that bothers me a little bit, but putting up the fence, that was, I mean, you didn't even put the ugly side up on your neighbor's-
You always give the best to the others.
That was the right way to do it. So, I'm, I'm feeling like you've done what you can do to comply other than this driveway piece. I think that your argument is that it's more efficient and potentially less noisy for you to use this way. We're talking about two trucks, a couple trips a day, I'm not having that much heartburn over it.
Since of the stress, I did have another neighbor that wrote a letter, if you want to see it or hear it.
That'd be the same guy that had the letter before, or talked for you before.
Yes, it would be, Michael, the other neighbor that's right next to us.
All right, so, would you be okay with the driveway being removed from the requirement or not?
I would be okay with it.
I'm not.
Okay, well, that's three. I have a feeling that in a few months, we're gonna be back here, because getting a truck up that grade is gonna be noisy as a HE double hockey sticks. So, okay.
A question I have is, have you taken trucks up that grade yet?
Yes.
Okay, and was, I guess-
Loud as ever, the kids came out of the house and one thought it was going on.
It's gonna be, yep.
And so, it is not just a little loud, thinking of your truck just screaming, because that's what it has to do.
I would be willing to delay the taking out until spring, that it doesn't have to be, because, and for me, it's honestly more for the pine trees' sake. It's going to be more, I would, well, I don't know, I would assume it would be harder on the trees to take it out now, though they're currently, I don't know.
Okay, so you're okay with extending-
I'm okay with extending it until spring.
How do we do that?
My, I'm gonna look at, maybe, my preference would be just a verbal direction rather than amending the resolution.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would ask for a formal resolution amendment of the resolution, because the current IUP states December thirty-first. And if you don't have direction from the council to extend it past December thirty-first officially, we are now arbitrarily doing it based on direction. So, if you're going to amend anything, we would want everything approved as in, this is what I'm amending the IUP to be, whatever that motion would be, whether that's extending the IUP physically from three years to five years, or whether that's extending the timeline related to the driveway from September thirty-first to May thirtieth, or whatever the timeline is, that way, we can officially have a on-the-record adjustment to that IUP, that'll be my request.
All right, well, let's clean that part up first.
I would make the motion to extend the driveway coming out until, let's call it, May thirty-first.
When do weight restrictions typically come off?
Middle of May.
What did you say?
Middle of May.
When do weight restrictions come off?
Road restrictions.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry, that was May thirty-first?
Yeah.
May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. Can you live with that?
What was the date?
May thirty-first.
As opposed to what was later today?
December thirty-first this year.
I think May thirty-first is a little bit late. Crosses out, they go in the middle of March. I'll take May thirty-first.
You're okay?
Any second.
More likely than not.
Nothing's ideal.
You can take it up before that, so if it ends up being an easier, you could do it before that. There's a requirement you can't do before, I just can't do it after that.
Right.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Hold on, some papers, say aye?
Aye.
What was opposed, say no? That carries five to zero?
Mr. Mayor, for my clarity, the extension is not approved.
That's correct.
Extension is, no.
No extension.
The IUP stays as, in my opinion.
Only the only amendment was the date for the removal of the driveway.
That was what was, yeah, motion, that was what was seconded, that was what is ordered now.
Okay, well, then, I guess, as far as that goes, we're done.
Well, how about the, isn't there two votes, one for the extension or not?
The extension, three of us don't want.
Correct.
We can vote on it if you want, but it-
No, I'm just trying to be respectful, because I put a lot into this and come to find out, things have changed and it is what it is.
I want to revisit it before you get another two years on it.
I will gladly come back and-
Yeah, the IUP, it's still valid for three years, so you have the timeframe, and then you-
With two years left.
With two years left, yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, item Q.
Okay, item Q. This is an amendment to an interim use permit for an event center located at one seven five zero one Dayton River Road. This was an interim use permit for an event center that was approved by the city council this past year. With the IUP, and I should say, this is zone agricultural, which does not allow signage, the applicant is requesting to be allowed signage similar to what would be allowed in a commercial zone district. Within the IUP ordinance, the intention is, is that signage, the allowed signage would be detailed as part of the IUP, and so, because that wasn't done in the first place, this is the amendment. The applicant is proposing to install one sign per silo, there are two silos, so there would be a sign that's facing east as well as one on west. If this were zoned a commercial property, it would be allowed, well, I don't have that memory, it's, sorry, if, the proposed signage consumes about eighty percent of the signage, wall signage, that would be allowed, so it does leave some space left over for additional signage on the future event center building itself. The silos themselves are about eighty feet tall, the top of the sign, proposed sign, would be about fifty feet.
I don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion to approve it, but I think it looks nice.
Does, does it have to be lit? Is there an option to not have it lit?
There's an option. So, the applicant is requesting that it be lit as one of the conditions of approval. With the sign permit application, the applicant would have to submit his photometric plan that shows the foot candles as it radiates out from the lighting source.
Because I, because, well, because the whole signs and ag, I think, is a weird question, because I've passed plenty of farms that have a sign up that says the name of their farm, but I've also passed houses that have, you know, I'll use my own, like, Givenastin, is that what, like, so if you have a farm and I put a sign up, is that considered advertising? So, just at Thicket Hills, that's the name of your farm, I don't, like, lots of farms do that. I think it's the lighting it that might take it one step, like, one step further for me that, but, so that, the lighting is the only thing I have any sort of issue with, because, like I said, there's all sorts of farms, there's just people who have, like, this is my address and this is our last name, right? And that, there's no issue there. Thicket Hills is the name of their vineyard, like, if it was just a vineyard and it was just a farm and they had that on the side of their silo, would we even be having this conversation? That's, that's a genuine question. If it was just a vineyard and they just had the name on the silo, would we be having this conversation?
Yes.
Okay, a neighbor could complain about that.
It's a sign, so, you know, I, there are many signs, you think of Century Farms that have the Century Farm sign out front, we really don't recognize that as a sign.
Why not? Why would this be a sign and that's not a sign?
Yeah.
I would look at it as a non-commercial sign.
But-
You can argue it different ways.
Yeah.
So, it depends on what is on the sign.
I think that's part of why we have a fence ordinance that's four million pages long, is because we try to hit every use case and you can't. And so, yeah.
Historical monument sign is still a sign, right? Yes?
Can I, I have a question.
Good.
When we're talking about lighting, can you give an example, maybe somewhere in, or of, like, how lit are we talking here? Like, are we, can you, just for reference, can you say, like, this would be, do you know what I mean? So, like, I can have, like, a reference, because, like, lighting can mean a hundred different things, and when you give me a foot candle, like, yeah, how do you wrap your head around?
That's a great question for the applicant, to be honest with you, maybe, also, because I'm assuming they're looking at something that they're gonna say, "Hey, we're looking at something like this," hopefully that they can use this.
Can the applicant-
That's my, that's my thought.
Do we have any more questions?
Are we shining a light on it, or are we lighting it up, you know?
Yeah, is it, like, it's not neon, but you know what I mean, like, what is the-
I think I can maybe clarify some.
Name and address and spew.
Yeah.
Jack Burnins, one four seven seven zero Thicket Lane in Dayton. Been a resident for thirty-some years, and my son, John, he'll probably come up if I miss anything. So, let me just start kind of sort of from the beginning. Well, we have these silos, we're like, you know, we don't want to tear them down, because other functional, they're actually, we had soybeans in them last year, so we can use them as a silo. But we saw the Seven Stone Silo up on one sixty-nine, you look all around the countryside, you'll see Harvester Silos with Harvester on them and the American flag and all that, so we're like, let's make them iconic for the city, and we hope we've done a good job with the painting and the logo, we think looks really nice on there. So, our idea was basically, and the whole reason, the whole, we brought it forward to Hayden, and then eventually John, was that there's no really any direction in the IUP ordinance about signs. So, that's a gap, right? Technically, there's no signs in agriculture. Well, we're on agriculture, but we're also gonna be a commercial business, so we got to at least tell people, "Hey, we're here," somehow. We wanted to do it in the most sleek, elegant way that we could. From a lighting perspective, what we're talking about is taking the power all the way up to the top and downlight it, so it's very, very minimal lighting, which we think goes with the whole branding and theme and everything else we're trying to do. And when we talked to the planning commission, they were supportive of that, they said, you know, what, we like the downlighting, we'd like you to have no more than, I think it's point one foot candles at the property line. So, we've talked to some people, like, what does that mean? I, I believe we can achieve that with downlit lighting, no problem, but, I mean, until someone gets out there with some photometric device at the property line, I guess we're not gonna know for sure. But our intent is not to have a quick-trip sign, you know-
You're not gonna have gas braces on your-
On the, yeah, on the side of these silos. This is to be very, well, like I said, you know, sleek, elegant-looking, and honestly, from our perspective, you know, if our business is successful, it becomes an icon in the city of Dayton, because you got, we preserve these really beautiful silos that are gonna look super sharp. So, that's kind of our plea and-
Well, I think that answers Sarah.
Come on up.
I'll get the mic.
JT Burnins, one seven nine two one Dayton River Road. And just to answer your question, it would be downcast lighting, and if we were to follow the point one foot candles, and I've been trying to understand what that means exactly, but from what I understand, and you can do your own research and see if I'm correct in this, but point one foot candles at the property line would essentially almost be no light. That would basically be kind of the, the tailing would maybe hit the property line, and it would be, that way, non-intrusive for our neighbors across the street, because for the most part, we have a neighbor to the north of where the silo would be at, I would estimate maybe a hundred and fifty yards, so I don't think that that would be shining that direction, and it would kind of be, you think about downcast lighting, you're kind of got to put it back onto the silo, right? So, it's kind of pointing back this way. So, I don't see them, I'd be more concerned about the neighbor closest to us across the road. The one home is condemned, right, and so we know no one's there. And then the other home, I believe with that rule, it, you wouldn't have much if any light to cross River Road and be a nuisance to them, is, I guess, the hope, both with the guidelines that we've been given and our own, you know, we're friendly neighbors, we want to stay friendly neighbors, and so, that, that was the intent there. Just, I guess that was kind of long-winded.
Just for reference, I've got a light meter on my phone, so it's nice to have an app. So, this is about fifteen-foot candle, so fifteen, thirty times as bright as it should be.
In the room right now, you're saying, or?
Right here.
Okay.
Now, granted, when you're looking at something, it's all relative to what, what is behind that, so if there's no light behind it, everything looks brighter. So, I know, Councilmember Frashanis used the example of a billboard that's in Ramsey that I think you can see.
I know the one.
Yeah.
We can all see it.
So, the request of the planning, which was point one foot candles?
That was what we were getting.
That's what they told the planning commission, said, I think they looked up-
It's like, essentially, it's like essentially zero light.
What's-
So, foot candle is literally a candle from a foot away, that's how much light a foot candle is.
But that's at the property line, not the sign.
That's, that's, that's one foot candle, so one tenth of a candle lit, if you're one foot away from it, would be how much light would be coming off.
At the property.
At the property.
That's correct. Just as a reference, like, I literally just Googled what is a foot candle, and it's literally a candle a foot away.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what I read.
Pretty crazy.
You know, like, you talked about, could you illuminate them from the backside, but I think it would look-
Well, and I think that would be brighter and be more obnoxious.
And then we thought about from below, but then light pollution into the sky, and that goes against your dark sky ordinance, right?
Very absolutely opposed to that.
Yeah.
I think it works in your favor, too, that they're, they're black, you're not getting a lot of reflected light, except for your logo there, which is the whole point.
Yeah, and the logo would be a very thin white aluminum, basically raised about two inches off the silo, there, you can kind of see them, there's metal ties that go around the concrete, you can't paint those, and so that's really our only choice from a signage option.
So, a question I have is, does it have to be lit? I mean, I'm thinking about who's coming to your location, who's coming at night, who needs, does this-
It's more, it's more really for, if you think about, like, awareness.
Okay.
So, you know, that road, roughly, I think it has like fifteen, twenty thousand cars a day or something going back and forth, most of those cars are in the rush hour in the morning and the evening, and it's just really about, you know, making sure, I mean, technically, and probably, the lighting, you know, in the summer, you're not gonna really probably see it much, but in the winter, like, when it gets dark at four, you want that traffic coming home to see it, just as a awareness thing. That's the main, main purpose. I mean, we will be open past that time as well.
But at that point, we're leaving, not trying to find it, I'm just thinking, like, wedding guests trying to get to your location.
It's kind of like they ask us, because we got some signage on the building itself, but we don't even know if we're gonna do that, because the building's two thousand feet from the road, and when you get all the way up there-
You know where you are.
You know where you're at. I like, you gotta tell someone.
I just, I've had to direct enough family members to wedding locations and how challenging that can be, so that's who I'm envisioning needing to have signage to know where the heck to turn.
Yes, of course.
And I'm thinking, well, they're gonna be showing up most likely during daylight hours, and so they're not going to need it lit on the silo, but this is more in, it's kind of an advertisement in some ways, so.
Yeah, in a way, I mean, it's, it's all about, you know, it's both, but branding is certainly a big part of it. You know, you want people that are driving by to know that it's there. I mean, you wouldn't believe how many people have commented just on the silos, on, once we painted them, people were like, "Those are so cool." You know, so-
It was cool.
Does this eliminate or go into, because I, I haven't driven by Hast recently, I'm assuming you're gonna have a sign at the driveway, so people know that this is where we turn in, correct?
At the entrance?
Yeah.
There's already a small sign there, we've got a small, it's just the TH, and it's on the side of the pole shed there.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We need to replace the Beach Family Farms.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
And that's where I was like, if, there is, you didn't need an ordinance to have the Beach Family Farms sign up, so why do you-
No, and this is what, you know, we came to this- No, and this is what, you know, we came to this, to Hayden, because we're like, you know, it's not clear.
Eh, no, it's not.
But, you know, if, we could have strictly said, okay, well, it's an existing structure, it's agriculture, we don't even need a sign permit. But we were trying to be like, okay, we don't wanna spend this money and then get sideways with the city, because they saw it a different way than we did. But, I mean, they've been good to work with, and we've tried to find a way to make it work, and I think they have, and so that, I'm not complaining, though, it's just like our, our thought process as we went through this.
Yeah.
Well, I do think it's important, I think we need to revisit the sitin' warrants for ag, because agro-tourism is a growing industry, and, like, we already have some orchards and whatever, and like, where does that, where does that tip from? I'm just a farm, but it is a business, like, I, I have some honey berries that are going to be ready to be harvested next spring, all fingers crossed, and my plan is to do some pick-your-own, so I'm going to need a sign so people can come, but that's strictly an ag business. So do I need to get a permit to get a sign to say that this is my farm, like, and it, do, like?
It's gray.
It's gray, but I think as ag businesses, as, you know, when you're just pouring in soy, it's one thing, but when you're an ag business for agro-tourism, then it's a whole different thing, and we don't have rules one way or the other, and I think we're gonna have to, and I think so.
Big mayor member was called, so I wanna keep the comments, and I agree, I like the comments and stuff, but let's try to focus on this, I'm not supposed to ever leave a sign.
I'll modify, amend my motion to include downcast lighting, not to exceed whatever it was.
Point-one foot candle.
At the property line.
City code requirement, I would just.
I was gonna say that's.
That's the requirement.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so we had, we previously had an a mo-.
Yeah, we already had an a mo- a motion and a second.
So we didn't need to do a.
So.
But he didn't need to add that, because it's part of the ordinance. Right?
It's already.
Oh, I don't need to add it.
So you're good with the first motion?
So Scott and David.
Right, and David.
That's correct.
Dang.
Any more discussion? By the way, do you guys have a sodium light out there? Most farms do, just a big yard light, sodium light.
We've taken it down.
We took the sodium light down.
It was on the old grain bins that we removed from next to the silo.
Because those are far brighter than this is gonna be.
Oh, yeah. So we do have some, like, on the ag buildings, we have motion lights, just for security, like, come on if you get too close to the doors, but we took the sodium light down. Yeah, because it is, I mean, first of all, it uses a heck of a lot of power, and second, it's, like you said, it's like, yeah, it's very bright.
It was on the grain bin, we decided not to put it back up.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hold them favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Hold those opposed, say no.
Thanks for the time.
So that passes five to zero, thank you.
So the, yeah, mayor council, we will address the signage ordinance and stuff, and the twenty-twenty-six item sounds good.
Item R, concept plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item R is a concept plan for Suite Living Assisted Living, on an unaddressed property, it's PID fourteen dash one twenty dash twenty-two dash forty-one dash zero zero two five. So otherwise, this is the southwest corner of Dayton River Road and Balsam Lane.
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner, yeah.
Southeast, oh, it's the southeast. This is two-point-eight acres, the applicants are proposing to build an assisted living facility with thirty-two units on one floor, that is both assisted living as well as memory care. It is a suite living operated by Hampton Companies, I believe. They operate twenty-one facilities in the Twin Cities with an additional six that are under, currently under construction. The property is zone GMU four, mixed-use, which allows a mixture of residential, commercial, and light industrial. As far as the residential portion of it, it is specifically, it does allow multifamily, multifamily does not include assisted living, so an ordinance amendment would be needed or required to allow assisted living within the GMU four district. One question for the council is going to be, should that be allowed as a permitted use or as a conditional use? So I just wanted to get that out there before I forget to ask it. Within the GMU four district, it does require that fifty percent, that the building consumed fifty, the building frontage consumed fifty percent of the lot. Here's the lot. The applicant has submitted two plans, one, concept A is a linear design, concept B is an L-shaped design. The applicant has no preference of one or the other. The planning commission, the majority of the planning commission did recommend the L-shaped, as did staff, for both aesthetic reasons, as well as the access of the, I'm calling it roundabout, but just the circular driveway that goes through there. Trying to think what else. As I was alluding to, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on December third. With the concept plan, there is not a formal action, and each council member, or in the commission's case, commission member is asked to give opinions of how, whether or not they support the project, or what would make this project better. And with that, I give it our best, ask any questions from the council.
Any questions? Concerns?
I do.
Okay, spew it.
I don't know how to phrase this. I think it's, okay, first of all, I think it's important that we have all different kinds of housing options, especially for our aging population. But I do have a question for Gary from an emergency response viewpoint. I know that some communities have started looking at, like, the no lift, no-touch. Facilities that have a no lift, no-touch policy tend to have a lot more emergency nine-one-one calls, for lack of a better way to say it. I'm just kind of wondering, is there a way, because again, like, I think this is a really great thing, a great idea to have, like, our aging population have somewhere to spiel to stay in our community, but do you see any kind of issues, because we, we do not have a policy as of now, and Maple Plain just passed one about repeat calls from facilities such as, like, ones like this, I was wondering, from your perspective, do you see any issues, or how would we manage that if we did have lots of those repeat calls from lift assists?
Mayor and Councilmember Henderson, we often find, to your point, with assisted care facilities, and I'm not sure familiar with this particular one, and maybe the mayor's willing, the applicant may be able to answer the question. If they have a no lift policy, there are some, probably more so for group homes, that we're not familiar with often. They just kind of pop up, and then we end up having, I know when I was in Brooklyn Center, and we had numerous no-lift group home facilities. We did run into it sometimes with larger facilities. I think it's really just having that conversation with the applicant or the owner of the building of what is their policy, because I guess my phrase is our back is no less important than their backs, if you will, so we want to be of assistance when we can, if they have hoier lifts, those are extremely helpful for us, as well as them. But I think if things are put into place, I don't see a big problem with it, it's just having that conversation up front.
Okay, I think that was my real, just kind of off-the-back question before we get too far down the process here, is, I guess, just putting that on the table.
Any other comments?
Comments about just the design, in terms of the location of the, the resident activity patio, that it is on, the way it's oriented, it's facing kind of northwest from, and it's the busy road.
Are you talking about the, the right one?
I, well, both of them, either the right one is the northwest, and the one is just on the north. In both cases, or that's a little northeast, but in both cases, it's basically facing a really busy road in the shade and the wind, and I don't see that being a super, a place I would want to spend time. So just from a building perspective, I would think that putting a patio that you are wanting people to be at, that they would, I don't know, wanna look at something prettier than a busy road.
They did address some, actually, the applicants, yeah, come on up, they did address that.
Okay.
And my recollection was that the residents actually liked a busy.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers, I can address a few of those questions right away. We don't have a, a no-lift place in, or, we don't have a no-lift in place, so people, we have hoier lifts, we have two-person transfers, we have all those things, so. To your question, it's kind of funny, the first rooms that get requested are on the busiest sides of our buildings. My grandpa, for instance, was the first resident to move into our, I should have started with my name, first of all, I'm Jeremy Larson on behalf of Suite Living, Senior Care, but my grandpa was our first resident in our Little Canada building, and he picked the, the room on the hard corner overlooking the liquor store, just because he wanted to be part of the action, so.
And I apologize for not having a chance to watch the planning commission meeting, I've been scrambling to get an exam graded before the last week of classes, so I apologize if this was hatched out there, that's on me. Okay, so things, I just, things I like, I like that you are both the builder and the operator of it, that it's not getting farmed out to somebody else. I do really appreciate that about this project, and I agree, I think we need more housing options, so I really, I really like that. One question, is this just for memory, so is it assisted or just for people with specific, like, immobile?
So our, like you mentioned, we have twenty-one locations throughout the Twin Cities, twenty of the units in our building are assisted living,
Okay.
twelve are memory care.
Okay.
It is end-of-life, the next phase of assisted living is to move right on over to memory care. Our memory care wing is locked separate from the assisted living, just because there, because there are wanderers, so.
Yeah.
Yep, and we are family-owned, it's me and my dad that own the company, so we're local, and plan to keep it that way.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm not quite sure how to, to frame this exactly, but I know there's different tiers within long-term care in terms of payment coverage. Is this a facility that accepts Medicare patients?
Yeah, yeah, so we offer twenty percent of our building towards elderly waiver, which is paid for by the state, and that could fluctuate between buildings, sometimes it could be as high as thirty, or even forty percent, sometimes it could be a little lower. We don't kick residents out if they run out of money, so if they run out of money, we require them to have two years of private pay, but if they do run out of money, we help them get on the elderly waiver program through the state, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, because there are a lot of facilities that do not.
Yep.
Except Medicare patients, or that as the only, you're using the right words, I'm not, but that form of payment. Certainly it's needed, and it's needed in this area. I, I wonder a little bit, because of our, our lack of transportation kind of facilities, certainly, memory care patients aren't out and running around town, or at least you hope they're not, but the other residents, then, you know, how are, how are they getting around, how are they getting to the grocery store and so on?
Yeah, so actually, none of our residents drive, it'd be a really rare case, just because it is end-of-life, so we utilize companies like Metro Transit or some of the other bus companies around, and then, and then we have caretakers and other staff members that are willing to take residents grocery shopping if they would like. Otherwise, you know, they get their meals at our, our facility, they all have a kitchenette where they can have a fridge and a microwave, relying on family members to help stock, you know, some of the special items they would like in their rooms, but it's a lot more of the public transportation, and again, none of our residents are driving.
This is not a question towards you, but David made me think of this, does Metro Mobility serve Dayton?
The Dial Ride service.
Okay.
So there's a different name for it.
Yeah, every city has a different.
Transit Link is the name of it, that's run by Met Council, and that is available in, in the city of Dayton.
Okay.
This is a discussion I think we had last year in twenty-twenty-four with the city councils, a request to add us to the Metro Mobility Transit area, but that ends up adding a tax to everybody's property taxes to, in order to pay for that.
How much is it?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact percentage, but it is not a small amount right away, because you have to buy into the entire system, so you're no longer paying just for the people that are in Dayton, you're now paying for the entire system overall, and adding those miles or whatever, then add to the system, however that works. But Transit Link is what is available for us through Met Council, and it's available at any time, and it's just Dial Ride. The cost is fairly inexpensive, but it's cost per ride versus being a free, a more free service that would be paid for by property taxes.
So for Dial Ride or Transit Link, the res, the person using it pays for it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Versus Metro Mobility, which is free, okay.
Free, free, but everyone pays for it. Nothing's free.
Nothing is free, but it is, it is a cost shared by the entire city, recognizing that we may, at some point, hopefully, be alive long enough to need it ourselves, and so we're paying it forward. Helping other people is not a bad thing. You'd rather die?
I'd rather die.
Okay, noted, Scott, we're gonna reserve your room. I'll help you out if you need it, Scott.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I guess I like the L arrangement better than the straight one.
I do as well.
I'm for the L. And the, the outbuilding needs to be attached.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we, and that doesn't even have to be there at all, we just have them set up regionally for Christmas decorations, and just so they don't, you know, our maintenance department doesn't have to always come back to the back office.
Is it easy to attach, because it didn't look to me like it would be easy to attach?
No, I don't think it would be, I think we would just omit that altogether.
Which means you couldn't have it.
No, we wouldn't have that.
I'd be okay with an accessory building, but.
If you do the L shape, it looks like there's more space available, do you have plans for that additional space?
No, we would just keep it as green space, and maybe have some more landscaping options, so.
Okay. Would there be any plan to expand your facility, or?
No, not at this time, no, we would just keep it the thirty-two units.
Yeah, mayor, I think that's a great point that you bring up, and essence is that if you did the L-shaped, you could, long-term, whether that's five years or fifty years down the road, you could do something additional on that property. If you did the linear design, you're kind of stuck, and that's it, you know. An L-shaped design does give you the ability, in fifty years, say you still wanna do something, you could do that.
A little bit, yeah. No more comments?
Well, when all you guys get there, maybe you don't have to expand.
You'll be out wandering in woods somewhere.
Brought me up by a tree, I don't care.
If, if I, I got a couple of questions. So just to summarize, the majority of the council is favorable of the L-shaped.
Yep.
In not, in either having an attached garage or no garage, so I think the applicant just would not do the garage. It sounds like there's support to allow assisted living in the GMU four district, would it be as a permitted use or as a conditional use?
I forgot what the planning commission recommended.
We weren't real clear on it, I didn't ask a very clear question, so that's why.
But I, I thought I had heard, well, what?
Heard the discussion, but I don't remember, you know, there was pros and cons to, to one of them.
Yeah, so, and so.
Did you guys have a preference?
There's one planning commissioner that, that recommended conditional use, just going off of memory, so the difference between it, permitted use, it's allowed, it's never going to come to the city council, in the case of a new construction, it's still going to come here as a site plan review, but not for the permission for the use. With a conditional use permit, it's permitted with certain conditions that are intended to mitigate any intended or potential nuisance factors, so like, we talked about lighting, stereo lighting as an example. You're gonna require conditions that shade headlights, as an example, that you would not normally do on a permitted use. Still, with the site plan review, you're going to catch that anyways for most of those nuisance factors, but you cannot deny a project, let's see, if, as a conditional, you cannot deny a permitted use. With a conditional use permit, you can say that it's not appropriate for the site for reason X, Y, Z, but you have to have the findings that support that denial.
So like, in, in short, conditional use gives you more flexibility long-term to be able to deny products if you feel that they do not meet the desires of the neighborhood. Permitted use essentially doesn't allow you to be able to do those things, and takes away that ability for us, and the, and the city councils in the future to have those.
My vote is conditional use, then.
So it sounds like you guys would prefer the conditional.
It doesn't matter to us as staff, it's merely out of the cultural.
This is a small zoning district, it's just along Balsam Lane, so.
My only concern with this U P is, you guys are likely to know what needs to go into that, and it just seems like it's just an extra burden on, on the planning commission and us, but if.
In a way, you gotta go through site plan or conditional use.
And I.
Somebody does, yes.
And my vote for it is because, about what I'm about to say is, I don't necessarily think we need them, like, two across the street from each other, and if there's a conditional use permit, we have the ability to say, we don't think we need two of the same thing across the street from each other. If it's permitted use, then there could be two across the street from each other, you know what I mean? Like, it just gives us a, a chance to say, like, this doesn't, like, that we have a reason. chance to say, like, this doesn't, like, that we have a reason, but we have to have a reason. It can't be arbitrary, but.
Yep.
I don't, I would like to, I mean, it's, I realize it's a small little district, but.
COP, I don't. And there's no vote, it's a small little district.
Is that, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Anything else? Are we good there?
Conditional use permit.
Any other?
Unless the applicant has any staff or any questions for the council.
I don't have any questions. Do you guys have any more for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to another concept plan.
Okay, this is, item S is a concept plan for Dayton assisted living, also an unaddressed property located on P A D 14-120-22-41-0005. This is the vacant parcel just south of Rain Tree Plaza. It's an acre and a half, also zone GMU four. As a concept plan similar to the last project, it is, there's no formal approval or denial. Councils asked to give individual opinions of whether you support the project and what can make the project better. This project is proposed, here, here's the property. So we have Balsam Lane fronting and then Dayton River Road and then Rain Tree at the, just north of this project. The project is proposing 58 units, so it is three stories above an underground parking garage or partially underground parking garage. So this is a larger project, it's both assisted living and memory care. This is a difficult site to work with because of the shape of the property. So in addition to the ordinance amendment that we spoke about in the last project, this would require a variance to the front yard setback. So within the GMU four district, there is a 15-foot minimum setback and a 30-foot maximum setback. The proposed setback will be over 100 feet from the property line, just because of the shape of the property. When this was discussed by the planning commission, the majority of the planning commission was supportive of a variance to exceed the maximum setback. So again, the idea of the GMU four district is to push buildings as close to the street as, as practical. Let's see what else. The building itself, it would be 38 and a half feet. Just for contextual, this is normal to a two-story house with a steep roof or pitch roof. In this case, it's three stories with a flat roof. In the GMU three district, or GMU four district, I apologize, the conditional use permit is required for any building that exceeds two stories. So in addition to the ordinance amendment of the variance, we'd have conditional use permit for exceeding two stories. We've not had an opportunity to do a formal kind of review of the architectural requirements, but this is roughly what the building would look like, at least from the south side that's facing the parking lot. Access-wise, because this is a fairly narrow lot that's facing the street, the applicant is showing both a direct access, which would be a right-in, right-out. Staff is, is recommending a shared easement onto Rain Tree Plaza, which would give a full access to the intersection of both rights and laps. This is the south access on Rain Tree, not to be confused with the north access, which is closer to the gas tanks. So this is the south access and the north access here. One of the recommendations that staff has, a requirement, I guess, is to have a, a firelane access around the building. The building's setback 20 feet six inches. Fire lane would be 20 feet wide. It really, as it's drawn, it doesn't fit. There's a little bit of space to move the building south, which would add about five feet on to the north property line, although staff's recommendation would, to the applicant, would be to work with Rain Tree Plaza to add land from their property onto this one, to make the property a little bit bigger and to fit an appropriate firelane going around the building. Any questions?
Why are you recommending the firelane around this one, but not the previous one? Is it because the road is right there? Maybe this is for the.
Mayor and Councilmember Van Aston, in this case, this is a three-level structure as opposed to a single story.
Okay.
So accessibility is easy, but you stretch those as hand-jacked from Dayton River Road or Balsam there. But to get access to that third, second or third story, you need to have that accessibility.
Okay, thank you.
John, this, this height, how many feet is it?
38.
38. It'd be really nice to know what that looked like from the neighbor's point of view.
Yeah.
Which neighbor?
To the west.
To the west, there's going to be houses.
The residential.
Yep.
And they already are there?
They're there.
Yeah.
Neighbor's couple, likely very large. Their house is probably not very tall, so.
Well, I know that, yeah.
Probably be over the top of the trees, I guess, even if they're fully mature trees.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think also elevation-wise, like, I would, I know the, the planning commission, someone made a comment about how these two projects feel like they should be flipped.
Yeah.
And I like fully agree to that. Like, if I'm talking about, if, if you gave me these two options, you're like, which one should have the three-story building? I'm like, this one, clearly. That seems like a no-brainer.
The reason I was asking that is because the development next to me is exactly that. Is, it's, and plus, they build on six, so they're all looking down at me, which, yeah, I.
Yeah, my initial reaction is that too. It's too much building for this site.
It does seem like it.
It's got a tower over everything around it.
It is a problematic site. All right, any questions for staff? Is the developer here?
Yep.
Come on up. Name and address?
Yeah, hi, I'm Chad Kaz. I'm with BJ Boss Builders, general contractor, representing my client and his team. This is Frank Corito.
Yeah, Franklin Corito.
1920, 134th Avenue, North, Dayton. And the other partner that I work with also lives in Dayton. Just across.
Is there anything over and above what staff has explained to us that you'd like to communicate?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there anything over and above what staff gave us that you'd like to communicate to us?
No, I did have one question on that fire road. We're just talking about the north side of the property. It wouldn't necessarily have to go all the way around the building, if that was my understanding?
Primarily, if I could gain access to the north side of the property, that would be ideal. Ideally, it would be all the way around, but I can work with avenue accessibility from the north and the south side.
Yeah, because can you, like, the, the south side, the parking lot, can I offer you that accessibility? And then the north side could offer you accessibility on that side?
Yes.
Then you could hit every unit?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, because I believe we could shift that, you know, to make that 20-foot road. It'd be a, a pull-in, probably a back-out type of situation?
That's fine. That's, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Can I ask my same question? Do you have a no lift, no-touch policy?
I'd have to refer to Frank.
So you've.
It's both, the top will have the most independent living, then middle, as they slow down, get them to memory care unit at the, at the last, you know, the first floor. But we don't have that. We, we have two people assist with assisted stands and lifts.
Could you talk into the mic, Gary?
Yeah, so there, there's no lift policy. We, we are able to do two people assist. It's just a matter of staffing and using equipment on how to do that.
Any other comments?
Is this also going to be an end-of-life facility?
Yes.
Same as the last one?
Same as the last one, yes.
I really got a problem with the 38-foot building and with those residents right on the other side of it.
Question for the applicant, would it, does only work if it's a three-story or would it, you, I don't know what the number count would be if it were only two.
Yeah, I can't answer that right now, right here, sitting here.
Sure, yeah.
And that'd be something I think Frank and his team would have to look at with their pro forma if we, you know, took away a whole floor.
Would that would do it?
What, what, yeah, does that kill the deal or, or not?
Yeah.
I will, can I?
Go ahead.
Approach up here once? We did look at a couple of different.
Where you cut it off?
Layouts of the, of the building to kind of make, create like an L shape and everything like that. But, you know, you're pulling up here, it's mainly on that commercial property side. We're, we're staying away from here. Because of this corner, tight corner, you know, we're off that property line a little bit more than some of, some of the private law will setbacks, you know, so.
Do, do you, I mean, you know, all the buildings constructed, could it be such that the west side's two stories and the east side's three?
Again, I think that's something we just have to look at. We have to look at the design costs and, and the budgets and everything like that. I think ideally, three stories is how we set out for it.
Yeah, I understand that. I suspect, though, that you may have a problem with three stories.
Yeah. The three is a problem for me, definitely.
Yeah.
Especially on this, such a small lot.
The three in this location.
Correct. In, three in a different location, I would be, I would be okay with. It would
depend on the location, but three in this location I struggle with, yeah. But I could get behind a two and a three.
So I think that's, it sounds like that's kind of our only input here. Is that right?
Yeah.
The three's a problem.
What about a, a step or a, just a, a two?
Wouldn't have a problem with that if, if, right about where the white box is, if you went two there and three on the other side.
What is your issue with three in general, Stephanie?
Well, fast forward to a future item, if you don't have the ability to reach that third story, that's going to be a really big issue, especially when you have a more vulnerable person living in these units.
Yeah.
That, that's my hangup, and the chief can tell me if I'm on the right track here, but adding a three-story building with the vulnerable adults in it is probably not, or even vulnerable people in it. You know, if you don't have the equipment to get to them, to rescue them, like, that's going to be a really, really big issue. If I'm on the wrong track, please correct me, Gary.
Mayor and Councilmember Henderson, I know that accurate statement. This will come up later, as Councilmember Henderson said. But currently, we have the accessibility with a 24-foot ladder, so we don't really have the accessibility currently to even, we can get to the second floor, but we'll, we'll have some struggles.
Are your facilities typically three stories?
Yeah, a lot of them, or, or, well, I, I do multifamily apartments as well, so I've done up to, you know, four stories, looking at a six-story. One thing I will say about this project in particular is it's non-combustible, non-combustible construction. So what that means is all metal framing for the walls and a little wood, and then JIP, and then you have, there's two stair towers, one on each end of the building, and we have it outfitted right now with two elevators. You know, the idea is that, like, yeah, you can have a problem with one elevator, but it's not very common to have both go down at the same time. So I always have an elevator open for access up and down throughout the building, so. And the building is, will be fully sprinkled, sprinkled as well.
You have a link, Dave?
I'm thinking about the, you know, what does that do to it if it's two stories on one end? So you, visually, I think it works better for the, the neighborhood to the west. If, at least the, the nearer part of it to them is, is lower. I'm just looking at where you're still going to have to have two stair towers to that third floor. I don't know where that fits in and exactly how the elevators would work, but that's something for you to, I guess, puzzle out.
Yeah, so it's about if we, if we, not to cut you off, sorry, but if we took half of it out, we'd be reducing it by 11 units, the overall.
What about?
Of 58.
What would that do as far as the two paths down? I mean, like, Dave was saying, your third floor would just be limited to the one stairwell and the one elevator?
Yeah, we, we'd have to work through the design there, but if, if we're going to do it, you know, maybe cut it right here, because then you got your elevators here.
Oh, okay.
You know, and you got this, we have this kind of common area that goes all the way up.
So on the third floor, you'd still have two elevators and one stairwell?
Yeah, then you'd have one stairwell on the third floor, yeah. You wouldn't have two until you got down to the lower levels.
So I have another question related to the Canada layout, and maybe this is just kind of a stock thing that you're showing here, but are, or are you actually having a number of semi-private rooms in this facility? Because a lot of them show two beds.
They, they, they have the ability to have two beds, I guess, I think.
Yeah, we did factor in couples. If couples want to move in, we want to have rooms that couples can, can.
So this would be like husband and wife kind of arrangement?
Correct, in the, in the third floor, yes.
Not, yeah, not sharing a room. Yeah, the, the rooms were designed to be private. And I think the, the, the two kind of suites were kind of on the corners. The rest of them in the middle were kind of your typical unit, which would be a, a bed, a bathroom, and then a kitchenette with a mini fridge and a microwave.
Okay, and you're just showing that second bed if there was a, a couple kind of a arrangement where they are moving in together. Okay, that makes more sense to me. And then I ask this of the last applicant too, what sort of tier of, of seniors are you taking into this facility? Do you accept Medicare payments?
Exactly the same, yes.
Same scenario, okay.
So, are you operating, because you're, you're building the building.
Yep, we're a general.
And you're operating the senior.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
We're good?
I do have one more question, sorry. You've got parking spaces underground. Are those for the residents or for the caregivers? Are your, so they would be driving in and out of this?
Yeah, the, the third floor are more independent. They're moving in as a couple. They can still drive around. But as they slow down, then they come down to where more care is given. Like, if you look at the first floors where the nurses are, there is and this stuff. So they are more independent up, but they can, they keep slowing down and moving down to more, more care is given.
Is that something that we would have to at some point adjust? Because, I mean, I, at least my experience is that when couples move in here, there's only one car. So I don't know about our parking ordinances, or do we accommodate?
Mayor, I think the answer is not specifically.
I didn't think so.
No, it's a, a half car, half of one vehicle per unit.
Per unit, so I think we exceed that. I think we exceed that total count, like, on our site as it sits right now.
What did you just say? Half a car per unit?
So the assumption of assisted living is you don't have residents.
So we do have assisted living in our parking ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I think we did.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I apologize.
You've never used it?
Because we don't have any. Because we don't have any, okay.
Which is why we don't know about it.
Well, that sounds like it's size right. Any other comments or questions?
My only thing, and I like both projects, I'm not sure we need both projects. That's the one thing. And I, just right across the street from each other. Okay. I, I'm not saying yes or no, it's the thing that popped into my head. It was like, do we need two right across the street from each other? But if they both feel like there's enough people, then that's fine. Like, from a business model standpoint, if you feel like it's fine to have competition literally across the street from you, and you feel like you're not going to have an issue filling your spaces, it just seemed, we are going from, we don't have any, so having two is not an issue. It's that they're literally across the street from each other. That just felt a little odd to me.
I have a feeling that.
And, yeah.
So I have been in the healthcare business for around 14 years now.
Yeah.
Most patients in the hospitals trying to get a bed open for them to go.
Okay.
So there's more need, and we can even feed within around the.
Okay.
You don't have empty beds.
Okay, so that's just, like I said, I was just, ah, that they were going to be right across the street from each other, and this will become that neighborhood then.
Were, were you aware of this other project when you were putting yours together?
No.
So this is new information for you as well?
Like acquaintance, like, how is that?
Last planning commission, the planning commission, that's when we found out about it.
Oh, I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
How many facilities do you have run, own? I don't know what the right word is.
Right now, I run a hospice company.
Oh.
We just go to patients' homes. We don't have a particular facility where they come to, but we, we looked at, if you have a facility, it can be easier to have them in one place and take care of them in one place than driving around the 16 counties I do to visit.
Thank you.
Great.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one quick question? Um, there's a movement currently at this, I'm sure it's at the state legislature, some capacity for a single stairway exit. With your reduction from this a three to a two, would you still maintain multiple stairways? Could the stairway be moved closer to the elevators versus at the west end of the building?
Yeah, uh, we'd have to look at the design. And if that, and I mean, if that's the code that would have to allow, I guess we'd have to figure out a way to get it done.
Well, currently, so my, my concern is this, is there is a current movement to move to single stairway exits. Meaning that we're trying to get in, residents are trying to get out.
Oh, sure.
And so the movement from the fire service is to oppose that.
Okay.
So my, my recommendation, my request would be that there would still be two stairway, stairwells within the structure for residents to exit and for us to enter if that's the case.
Sure.
Just as more of a comment.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick last question.
Go ahead.
Just as he was speaking, I was thinking, so for the two, if we do a two-floor, does the underground parking still a requirement then? Because they, if the height is an issue, then you can take away the underground.
I think you need the underground parking.
I think we need it for our parking counts.
Yeah.
Yep, and we'd have to look at the number of units and what that, for the, if we reduce the number of units, what does that do to the parking counts? Can we reduce it, maybe cut it in half or, or what? So I think there's some things that we'd have to look at for that whole.
Yeah.
Or maybe still a three-story building, but not quite so close to that property line, if that?
Yeah, they talked about it, the planning commission, that it looks like you really can't shift it to the east.
Well, we can't, yeah, and if we, because we're going to, now we're going to shift it to the south to get a little bit more of a road, to get the fire road in there, that, it's probably about where, where it can.
It can be, okay. But going back to parking, well, yeah, that's, that's a, that's an issue for you guys to work out, obviously, but.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item T, the, uh, ever irritating A3 thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item T is Resolution 98 dash 2025, amend the comprehensive plan in ordinance 2025 dash 22, amend the A3 agricultural district. Uh, I, you know, shorten this, I am assuming the council's familiar with this project. Um, the council approved a comprehensive plan amendment and amendment to the A3 district, um, this past August or September. Uh, I think it was August. Uh, the, the comp plan amendment was submitted to the Met Council. The Met Council responded with an incomplete letter. Um, they had two big concerns. One is, um, the, the Met Council's opposed to the 2030, uh, sewer stage area from being included within the land that's eligible to be rezoned to A3. And then second is to, um, you know, summarize, to have some way of, of, um, requiring or reserving 75% of the developable land within the A3 district, uh, to be reserved for future subdivision once sewer becomes available. So, um, just to, what does that look like? So the first item of removing 2030 land from A3 eligibility. Um, this affects five parcels that are owned by two property owners. Um, I have spoke with both of them, um, kind of their, their intent. They would like to, they would like to develop sooner rather than later, whether it's sewer or without sewer. This doesn't, I guess in staff's opinion, this doesn't have a huge impact to, uh, the intent of the A3 district to remove this. Uh, it's 179 acres total, uh, which amounts to 17, potentially 17 homes. So this is, um, the five parcels that would be removed. Uh, so this is how the new line is drawn. And then this is the, uh, future 2040 sewer staging plan, um, that shows in the kind of pinkish parcels, these are the parcels that are 20 acres or larger that would be eligible to be rezoned to A3 agricultural. And just for anyone that's watching this that's not as familiar with it, in order, with A3 district, the intent is if you have, um, 20 acres or, or larger, you're eligible to rezone to A3 into subdivide. Um, but it's two homes per 20 acres, so that's why it's a minimum of 20 acres. Yeah, that's, that's the short summary of it. Um, with the proposed amendment to the A3 district, we are removing, um, the old language, which I don't have that on a slide, and replacing it with a blue text. Um, just to summarize this real quickly, um, item A states that in order to be rezoned to A3, it has to be guided as unsued rural residential in the comp plan. Um, so if you're in northeast, this is specific to Northwest Dayton. So if you're in South Dayton, Zone A, you don't qualify, you're, you're not eligible to be rezoned to A3. Um, item B with a concept plan and preliminary plan. Uh, it's required that the applicant submit a ghost plan showing how the property could be subdivided for a higher density. Uh, so the, the suggestion would be probably an R1 zoning for, as far as lot sizes go. Um, item C is to allow maximum 25% of the developable land in your project to be developed. So, um, developed, we're defining as including the right-of-way, uh, stormwater and a house pad up to, or minimum of a half acre. So kind of, in other words, it's proved that the, the property is developable, that each lot is developable. Item D, this is addressing the Met Council's concern. And just to summarize it again, is preserve 75% of developable acres for future sewer development. And you do that by requiring the developer to record, I'm going to call it a covenant, but there's, uh, there's more words to it. Declaration.
A declaration of covenants and restrictions.
Yes. Uh, so this is a, a document that the developer would record prior to recording the plan that just says that they agree to, uh, these six conditions and, and these are permanent. Uh, I shouldn't say permanent. They're permanent for 30 years or until sewer and water is available. Uh, item E is a preliminary plan shall identify the house pad in, in the, uh, the two septic system locations. Um, and then F is a requirement of the Met Council that upon the availability of municipal sewer and water, the city shall permit parcels within the A3 district to be rezoned to zoning district with a higher residential density consistent with metropolitan council policy.
Shall permit, not require.
Correct.
And that's it?
So the city's practice is that we don't rezone property without the applicant's or without the property owner's consent.
Yeah, that seems like an odd one because that's, it's kind of the default.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole point of this was, okay.
That they want it there.
Yeah.
Um, we try to look at legacy woods and estimate what, how does the new changes affect legacy woods, as an example? So, um, again, with the A3 district, you can only develop 25% of the developable acres. And legacy woods, we're estimating, once you take out the right-of-way, the stormwater pond and a half acre per lot, that equals about 14%. So 14 is less than the 25%. Um, with the A3 district, there's, uh, allows up to 25% impervious surface per lot. Uh, so with every zoning district, we have a maximum impervious surface area, whether you're agricultural or, or R1, R3, whatever it is. So, um, the 20, originally this was approved at 30%, and then I think the council this last time approved it at 25%. It's still not, I'm not aware of where we've run into the impervious surface as an issue on residential properties. And then again, uh, this is the overall sewer staging plan for the city. Uh, the map at the left, uh, shows the hatched areas that are parcels that are eligible for A3 zoning. Um, the map at the right is a, a focused area of Northwest Dayton that shows the ultimate sewer plant. So this is hypothetically where, approximately where sewer and water would be extended to Northwest Dayton.
City staff will stand for any questions.
Oh, you're, okay. I wasn't sure you were done. Why, I guess it's kind of moot. Now, they've seen this boundary, right?
Yes.
The Met Council? Okay.
Um, I, I do also want to add a preference. Um, you know, this is 2025, we're almost in 2026. Uh, 2028 is when our next comp plan update is due, and I'm anticipating that the council is going to change the sewer staging plan. So what you approve tonight is good until the next amendment within the next couple of years.
So to that end, there were some comments about changing or dumping the post 2050 designation because they, because they don't use it. Why would we make that change to this plan when it's, you know, it's sort of in its sunset stage?
Met Council plans out 20 years ahead of time, and so we have, um, so for the next plan, we'll have a 2030 sewer staging area, a 2040, and a post 2040. So post 2040 is, you know, anything after 2040. When we adopted the, the current comprehensive plan, we went a step further and did 2050 or post 2050. Um, that's above and beyond what the Met Council's requirement is. Um, so they just, this was a very short conversation of suggesting that we combine 2040 and post 2050 together.
Yeah, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me to do it now. If they, if they didn't like that designation, then they shouldn't have approved the, the 2040 plan.
Sure.
So if we were to redesignate this area that had 2030 in it to 2040 or 2050, we're kind of stuck? Because now we have this outline in here. We would have to.
We would, yeah, so.
We would have to amend this also.
Mayor, yeah, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, the idea would be to amend the, the staging plan to adjust where the A3 availability would be. So we would do that as part of the staging plan update that we're going to already do anyways with the Met Council.
It would just be one package.
As the hatching would show, we would just change where the hatching is available based on the fact that we would change the staging plan anyways based on the sewer staging plan from the council's perspective. So it's not going to be any additional work, it's going to be the same map.
You mean for the next comp plan?
Yeah, for the next comprehensive plan.
Well, and, yeah, and that's, I guess that's, I, I wasn't too much concerned about this amendment, but in the future, if let's say we decided to sweep this thing out to the, to the east, we'd still have to change not just, I mean, let's say this, the, the stuff to the east had 2040 already in it, we would have to make an amendment to change the border also.
Uh, it, well, I wouldn't say it's amendment, is we're going to do this all at one process, one project.
I'm talking about in the future.
We would do as one map amendment, whether you're moving 2040 staging plan or whether you're adjusting where the A3 district is available to. It's one adjustment on the map at the same time. I think you're, I think you're, you're at the same point in understanding where.
Well, my concern is, is that we basically designated where we would put a zoning, which seems very odd for our comp plan. Instead of a guided use, we, we qualified this in the comp plan instead of, you know, our internal documents.
It's all, it's not allowing it everywhere in the entire city.
Yeah.
Like we currently do with other zoning districts, you can have those anywhere in the city, depending on where the.
Right, so in the comp plan.
Right, but now we're stuck with this.
Yes.
So in the comp plan, we have agriculture, you know, currently agricultural land that's guided for commercial.
Yep.
Yeah, I get your point there.
Nothing else is limited to a certain subsection?
Correct.
And this is.
And this is, so, yeah, it's kind of moot now, because.
I think this is, but I don't think we would have gotten it any other way.
I'll leave that alone.
We're going to redo the comp plan and we can revisit it.
All right, so.
I would like to just reopen, I know it's a long meeting and we're already at 9:30, but, um, the 1.5 net acres is the minimum lot size. I wanted five acres to begin with and, uh, I, I would, I said I would settle for three and we wanted about 1.5. Anyone else have appetite to bring that back up to at least three net acres?
No.
Okay, Dave?
The Met Council say that they preferred it to be?
Two and a half.
Two?
Yeah, so it was a.
Or two and a half.
It was a two and a half.
Comment or recommendation that it be more than, yeah, I think it was two and a half.
Because one and a half is just a big yard. That's not a hobby farm, that's not a homestead, that's just a big yard.
The Met Council's.
Depends on who you are, though.
Yep.
It really does.
Yep.
The Met Council's reasoning for why you want more than an acre and a half is to show there's enough land for the second, the, the backup, uh, septic system drain field. Uh, we did have a conversation with the Hennepin County Septic Inspector, who said that acre and a half, or net, one and a half net acres would be the minimum that he would recommend.
You know, yeah, we don't need to get into that, but that's such a crock. Where they live, I, that's where I live, there's two sites on almost every lot and they're a third of an acre.
Yeah.
Are you looking at me?
No, I, I'm, only because you live there and that's where I used to live. But all those sites have, have space for, for two, it's tight, but, and that's a third of an acre lot, so this acre and a half, so.
There's plenty of room for another site.
We're in the ditch, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know if there's appetite and the answer was no, 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 so fine, we'll move on.
I didn't say no.
Well, but there was three no's, and so therefore, it's three no's.
Well, as long as we're just getting out things that we don't like.
I'll agree with you.
I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with the, with the ghost plating thing, but it, it kind of bugs me that they're telling us that we had to change a word in there to say that we require it in reference to the flexible development guidelines of theirs, that we have to require it.
Yeah.
Takes a.
Okay, I said it, I'm done.
It's okay, Dave, it's a safe circle.
All right, um, yeah, this, this might feel good, but we're probably, yeah. All right, what do you need from us then? Just the approval of the?
Approval, yes.
Anybody have any more comments or? We will need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Dave and Scott, I'll let you, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no, carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Item U, payment of claims.
Mayor of the Council.
I left all my notes at home.
I got nothing.
Wow.
Staff will stand for any questions.
Anybody?
Fire away, Dave.
I have, uh, I have nothing on payment of claims, so.
Anybody? Okay, I need.
I did, but it wasn't a big deal and they're at home.
Don't worry every time.
Yeah.
Marty's got one thing on there, it's something, something platform, whatever platform means.
That's the bucket truck. That's what it is. And that was at the agency inspection.
Could, could have said bucket platform.
Okay.
You could have said bucket truck, but.
We got a motion in a second. Um, all this, oh, name, sorry, you need a motion in a second.
Sorry. You got the second chance.
Scott?
Who, who, sorry, who went first?
Scott.
Scott's first and who's the second?
I'll second.
Stephanie, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no, carries five to zero. And with that, we're on to item B.
Council like to take a break, or are you guys still good?
I could, I.
Anybody need a break?
Could use a break.
All right, we'll junk for three minutes. Omega five.
So we can continue to utilize the two pieces of apparatus that we have today, knowing that at some point in the future, that truck will need to be replaced, but we could push it out. Again, like I said, I don't have the exact numbers of what that would look like, but I wanted to get gain if there's any interest in the council. If not, then you can continue to pursue the cancellation of the contract.
Chief, can you back up a little?
Sorry.
I'm kind of confused about this. So sticking with, I guess, either one of these guys, let's stick with the aerial. My understanding was we would make that purchase decision just prior to us needing to, which I thought was out in 27 or 28. You following me?
I'm not, I'm sorry.
So it's a three and a half year build process or something like that?
Yep.
And which, and my understanding was we wouldn't need to make that payment until close to delivery.
Mayor, that is correct. So for example, let's say that council is interested in pursuing my request of taking the dollars that we've have towards the engine tender, putting that towards the ladder. We'd have roughly about $1.4 million deficit. That payment would not be required until we took delivery. The other option that we do have is we do have the ability to use PNC Bank as an example. We don't have to use that, but Pierce and McQueen use PNC Bank. And we could delay that payment further. We would take delivery in 2028, and then we delay that first payment until 2029. And in talking with Zach, and Zach can fill in the finances, but we probably would look at financing that additional $1.4 million on a five-year term with PNC.
So let me not muddy the waters with the tender. Let's pretend that doesn't exist.
Yep.
And we're going to look at, let's say we kept on track with this aerial. When would we have had to make the purchase? When would we have to write the check out?
Once it's ready, I would think.
Yeah, the current contract has us spending the physical money in 2028. I think that's where maybe you're a bit confused, Mayor, because December 2028 shows now it's almost on 3.125.
Yeah, that's if you buy it again.
So yeah, so let's say we cancel this contract and then say in December 2028, we want to receive this piece of equipment in three and a half years from then.
Oh, I get it, okay.
The new contract would cost us 3.125 million if we were to say cancel this one today in two and a half years, whatever the time is in 2028. We said, okay, no, now we need it, we want it three and a half years later, then new cost is now 3.125. Again, these are rough estimates based on the increase of a five and a half percent increase. Hopefully that makes sense. I think the 2028 thing makes it a little confusing with those.
Yes.
So basically the same logic then, and I'm sorry, I'm mixing this in, but the same logic then apply to how you stated how the tender would work, canceling and then reordering at that time.
Correct.
I have a question.
That's 25%. Is that kind of the number you looked at?
Yes.
And that's over the three years?
Yeah, so that's based on the, so the current contract was approved, the aerial was approved in May of '24. So it's a 25% increase from May of '24 until December 2028, so it's technically four and a half years.
Okay.
It's a 25% increase, that's why I tried to.
Well, that's 6% here.
Yep.
That's based on five and a half percent.
You got it, yep. So the contract for the engine tender is a little misleading because that's a November of '23 date contract. And so now it would be separate 20, so that's actually a five-year difference between the contract terms, and then that would give you another five and a half percent in.
How much did we, we prepaid part for the tender, right?
1.1.
We paid, the engine tender has been paid for in cash, so that's completely paid for.
Yeah, 1.1.
1.1 something.
Yep.
We just had that sent around?
We made a couple of deals.
Is that, is that engine tender?
I wasn't around.
Counselor for the shot, no. We are scheduled to go back out to Pierce in July to start working on the physical drawings and then moving to the next step for both units.
I have a series of like logistical, like questions, like data points. If you could answer them for me, because I'm trying to wrap my head around what the impact of not having the engine tender would be. How many gallons of water can that one hold?
The engine tender is scheduled to be 2,500 gallons.
Okay, and the tanker right now holds?
Engine here at station, oh, the tanker, I'm sorry, is 2,500 gallons currently.
So right now, okay. Sorry, my wheels are turning because I didn't have these numbers before. I guess where I'm struggling is not taking the engine tender, because that's like a first due vehicle, right? Like it's people, water, and tools to where you need to be. So you're able to do work, you have 2,500 gallons of water on that rig. Where right now, we've got the tanker that comes and then one of the engines that come.
Yeah, so from a deployment perspective, every time we get a structured fire, our engines are first off the door. So to give an example, currently, engine 21 has 1,000 gallons capability, and engine 12 has around 2,000 or 1,800 gallons, 17 or 1,800 gallons of water capacity on that particular truck. So between the two, we're bringing out about 2,800 gallons of water. You know, flowing 150 gallons a minute, it's not going to take that long. You know, we're not always constantly flowing at 150 gallons a minute, but there is the potential to do that.
How old are those two trucks, Gary?
Engine 12 is 2019, so that was the most recent purchase before my arrival, and engine 21 is 2015, I believe.
So they still got time.
21 is wailed in.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's.
We had 11, so yes, we had engine 11 for a time, that was in 2015, and we sold that one to give the engine tender here to put the money down for it.
And we bought the tanker.
Yes, we sold engine 11, we sold the old heavy rescue, and those dollars went to partially pay for the tanker because that was just basically a bide our time until we got this engine tender. We're going to resell it for the same amount of money that we paid for, which would be the same, and then be able to put down towards the piece. 21's like an 08, 07?
Yeah, it's supposed to be scheduled for 20-year replacement, so.
28, I think is on the contract, 2030, so.
Now, Gary, when you say scheduled, they're not, there's no NTSB 4965, whatever, whatever.
Counselor Solonic, there is not. Typically, what we see, and this is kind of what Zach alluded to before in the long-term plan, is that we want to probably get to probably about 12 years. Why 12 years? You know, for instance, we can run the truck to the ground, which is fine. Many places have done it. However, we start to incur significant amount of maintenance, as we did incur on 21, and we still continue to in some capacity. And then what we also lose is we lose the value of that truck from a trade-in perspective. So we did very well on engine 11. I'm trying to remember, 2015, 2016, I think was the purchase of that one. And in that capacity, we had a return of investment, or it was 450,000, I believe.
Yeah, I think we got 450,000, I think we bought it for like 800,000. I think it was over 50%. I think it was pretty.
I don't believe.
I'm pretty sure it was, it was not that much of a loss. I can look.
Do you know roughly how much money we've put into engine 21 because it's had substantial repairs?
Yeah.
I mean, even a rough ballpark?
I'm going to say we did 45,000 on the, on the engine, just on the motor itself. That was in '24.
That was because of the change, there was something with the oil changes and.
There was something with the turbo where it's getting oil up into the.
Yeah.
And then we've had some valve replacements, which are typical over time, but those aren't cheap either. You know, $2,000, $3,000 a valve can be easily spent on that capacity over time.
So I guess like, kind of where I'm getting at with all of my questions is like, I personally see the value in the engine tender.
Good tender.
Yes, because, you know, again, it's the people, the water, the tools, it has the ability to have all of those, to get all of those things to the scene, which is again why I'm guessing we've been down this road and why it was purchased in the first place. So for me, I see the value in keeping the engine tender and not forfeiting that and pushing that down the road, especially with, well, we did a bunch of work to engine 21, so maybe there's the argument on the other side of, we've put all this money into it, do we really want to?
But it's already into it.
Correct. Well, I'm just saying, like, do you really want to like replace it with something else? On the other side of that, I also understand the ask of the aerial.
Sure.
The timing and the dollar amount, I think, is where we're all on, for myself, a little bit hung up there of.
Number of houses to pay for it.
Correct. So I guess my question is, is understanding the value and what having that piece of equipment does for the citizens of Dayton and the fire department, is there another option? I know there are some communities that purchase them from other communities. Like, have we explored that option?
So from a use perspective, I can give you one example. I don't know exactly the cost, I'm just going to throw out a number because I don't know for sure. But I do believe, and I haven't checked with the chief yet in Hopkins, but I believe Hopkins is replacing their ladder. It's an 18-year-old ladder. Ballpark, maybe 500,000, but then again, I don't know condition, maintenance, and so forth. So I don't even know if that's a realistic number. But that is something that, yes, we can look at, used equipment. I don't have an issue with that. I just know that the one example I'll give you is engine 21, and then the money that, which is very unfortunate right now, like I said, we spent $3,500 in the rear end of 2019, a 2019 truck that only has 16,000 miles on it, which is frustrating. No one's fault doing the maintenance and whatnot, but so we could end up with a significant maintenance bill, I don't know. I know I can give one example from city of Plymouth. When I was there many years ago, they did have to replace, they harvested the ladder portion and had to replace the chassis, and then there's some issues in that capacity. So it can be fairly expensive, but that's, we definitely can take a look at what used trucks are out there and available.
Well, and I guess I would want to also be specific about it too, that like, in order to get into purchasing a used truck from another community, we would definitely want to know like maintenance records and all that. It wouldn't be just, oh yeah, someone's got a truck, like, let's do it. I guess, I'm just looking at like other communities, and I was able to go through and look at some other council, like packets and stuff, and you know, like Orno bought Coon Rapids' and they put some money into that, and they purchased it for less than, or less than 400,000, and they end up having to put another, you know, almost 300 and some thousand dollars into it. But again, like that price tag is still under, well under a million dollars. So like, I think I, I'm sorry, thank you for talking, I apologize, but I see the value in having it. I just want to know if there's another avenue that we can make it possible. Because a lot of the trucks that like I've found that were purchased were 15 years old. So they're not like, oh, this is a seven-year-old truck. So I understand that there will come other obstacles with that, but I think it's a workable path where the citizens are protected, the fire department has what they need, but we're not attached to a $2.4 million price tag. And then I'll get off my soapbox.
I want to follow up on one, and then we mentioned earlier about when we sold and when we not sold, so I went back and was able to review when we bought that 2016 vehicle, the engine 11. We paid 547,63, 54763 was the number. And then we sold it, again, time value of money, dollars are the same as they were then, but we sold it in February of 2024 for 427,000.
We kind of made some money.
So we almost broke, almost even, if you look at dollars, between 540 grand we spent in 2016 and then sold it in 2024 for 427 grand.
And that was engine 11, you said?
Engine 11.
So who did we sell it to?
Sold it to a department in West Coast.
Is this a solution, guys?
The, which thing? The used?
No, 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 no.
Or the engine tender swap.
I mean, right now, we're on the hook for nothing until 2028, late 2027. We could just leave it as, as where we are and see if the picture gets better.
How much have we saved?
We don't have to pull either one of them until 2027.
Counselor member Solonic, I do want to clarify, based on what the contract says, just for a point of clarification to what you just said. The following charges scheduled or costs incurred may be applied, 10% of the purchase can't price, which we're not susceptible at this time, but as we continue to go down the road, 20% of the purchase price after completion of approval of the drawing, so I'm assuming that would be in July.
It's in July.
And then 30% of the purchase price upon material requisition, so that would probably be within, I'm going to say six months or there.
I think it's, yeah.
After that.
My understanding from your counsel, it's either say no now, and then we are on the hook for zero, which is what we've been told and agreed to, or we are then potentially, not for sure, but potentially on the hook for some sort of percentage related to cancellation if we wait. And not saying we don't wait till tomorrow, but.
Your idea of a used unit, you could look at a used tender. I was trying to think of the name of it.
Could do that also, but.
You could look at a used anything, I guess, to your point, Scott.
So can I just, my, I've never necessarily had an issue with the ladder truck. It was when I first saw the budget and we were putting away what felt like pennies. And then I was like, and now magically we have several million dollars. And that just was like, and how, like, walk me through the magic part where we went, like, we're saving $100,000 a year and now we have a couple million dollars. And I didn't get, like, at that time, I didn't hear an answer really to how that would get funded. And I guess that's still ultimately my issue is.
It always was a bond.
Okay. So what does that, but what does that do to the tax base, I guess is my question.
About $600 out.
Yeah, so I don't know the numbers, I'm not going to start spending them because I have no idea what they are.
How much have we put away?
Yeah, so we've put away just, well, with the budget not yet approved.
If nothing changed.
Nothing changes on the agenda and everything else, I think it's just over $200,000 will be total by the end of next year. When the ladder truck was originally put in place, city staff put in the long-term plan, larger increases to the tax levy to be able to build up a fund value to pay cash for the vehicle, the aerial truck, in 2028 when we took delivery. But that was the idea for the process. Now, the timing might not be, okay, we would have, maybe we have to spend the money in 2027 at the end of the year, but then in 2028, we'd budget the money and get the rest of the money back, so we'd be out the money for less than 12 months and it would be fine. And then those dollars would be able to be reallocated to be able to go towards facilities of a bond or whatnot. That hasn't happened, which is fine. And then now we have to figure out how to adjust those things. No different than in your personal life, if you save up five bucks a month, it's really easy, but if you have to save up $100 at one time, it's like, holy cow, it's a lot of money. And so that's kind of where we're at with the ladder truck.
To some extent, we're also kind of, it was an opportunity save.
Yes, yep. And right now, I think what happened.
We knew in the end, we were going to bond you for most of that, two million, two and a half.
Depending on how you view things, but that, on city staff's perspective, at least, when I set up the long-term plan, it was to have, there are large increases still, they're not 2.5 million dollars a year, they were roughly $300,000 or so a year. They're still, they're still a lot, but they're not 2.5 million. I mean, the idea was the 300,000 one year, 300,000 next year, and now you have 900,000 because you have 300 from the previous year, and 300 from the new year, and now you have 600 a year, and that, that was, it was just kind of going to steamroll down the process. That was the goal.
And we've got a wall coming.
Yeah.
That's not the wall. That's a wall, but that's.
It's not the wall.
The idea was that if the wall hits like that, then we'd have the money available that we've already levied for for the other pieces of equipment that we could reallocate from the levies related to the piece of equipment to that bond for the wall.
So basically, your plan was that we would increase our tax from 35% to maybe 36%, maybe 37%, maybe 30%. And now you had a council that's like, no.
41, really.
We're not increasing.
Yeah, I don't remember what the number was. And they go, those were based on projections of tax capacity as well, and the projection of tax capacity haven't hit. This year, we only had 8%, and I think I planned, or thought it was going to be 12. Well, that's a big difference in numbers.
Next year, it's going to be lower.
It could be lower, yeah. Again, those are all just projections.
But that was my big question in the beginning, was like, where is this magic money going to come from?
That was the plan at the time.
Yeah. And so it's not, it's not that I ever thought we didn't need a ladder truck. I definitely hear we need a ladder truck. I just, and when I'm thinking about what this is going to do to our residents' taxes and how high that increase is going to have to wind up being, I have a hard, that's where, that's where my wall is, is increasing the taxes to that level. So if there's a way to find a used option to get us through, and I understand, like, like that's, you know, that's a lot of savings, I get that. And if my goal is to not increase taxes, then I want to have the cheapest option. So I get that, but that's, that's where my, my two disconnects, like, and I think this is where, I'm going to go back to my barn analogy. I wanted eight really nice stalls, and then I got the quote for eight really nice stalls, and that was never going to happen. And so I had a choice, I could either do eight shitty stalls, or I could do three really nice stalls. And I went with the three really nice stalls, and I will wait and maybe never get my other five. That might never happen, right? But like, so I think that's where we're kind of at. We have our really nice stalls, and I don't think we have the money for eight really nice stalls. And so that leads to the question of, what are our options? Do we, do we, and that, and I hate this idea of forcing a future council's hand that they have to increase taxes.
But they will have more houses. I mean, we have this big ugly coming.
Yeah.
And I think this is part of prepping for it, is to not have these, these, I mean, this is considering we have 4,000 homes, 3,800, something like that?
Yeah, it's just, it's over 4,000, I think it's like 41 and some change, something like that.
Right. We don't have the house space for.
So my question to you, Dennis, is, is it a workable solution to say that we move forward and we cancel this contract? And we give direction to begin conversations and looking for a used option that obviously meets all of our maintenance requirements and all those things, and doesn't require another million dollars worth of work? And we can talk about what the options are down the road, or like, go ahead and start making and seeing who maybe in 2028, somebody is like, hey, we're taking a truck, or we're going to get a new one, we're going to sell ours, and you know, like you have your chief conversations and you figure that out? Is that an okay? Does it mean that we're going to find a perfect one? It doesn't mean that we're not?
I think so.
I'm just trying to find like a middle between, like, bridging the gap.
You know, we, today, assuming we would go forward with this, at some point, we would have four engines. And I'm not sure where we're going to stop those four engines.
No, we would, engine 21 and the, or yeah, engine 21 and the tanker make up the engine tender, correct? Or the tanker.
Yeah, so the idea is that, there's a couple things. So the tanker that we have, we could resell and probably make a little bit of money.
That was actually the plan.
Yes, that was the plan.
That was the original plan.
All that worked out really well.
However, I would say because of even working with Chief Aaron's, and I haven't had a chance to talk to interim chief Scott at CGO, but we are starting to run low, if you will, on surrounding communities that are maintaining their tankers any longer. So like, we're continuing to go farther west out to get more of them because this surrounding area is all pretty much has a water source. That's not saying that we can't sell the, our current tanker that we have, when we bought that, and even in talking to McQueen, we would definitely get what we paid for it, if not, probably maybe another 50,000 potentially, based on its condition. So we did really well there in that capacity. So with, and the other idea too is, is that it doesn't hurt to kind of go back to having those three engines from a backup perspective, as you're well aware, we've had one go down for repairs or whatnot or accident, so we've been short one, and then just letting our neighbors know that, hey, we're short, just so you're aware. So we can make it work, fit the apparatus within the facilities that we currently have, just to reaffirm that.
So just so that I'm following all of the numbers, we potentially may have money from the tanker, and then the money we've put away that we could then put towards, I would say used, because a pre-owned aerial, and that would be a workable solution for the fire department.
Yep.
For us, we get out from underneath this, or out of in front of this huge wall, but we still leave the door open to find a cheaper solution.
I sent you a picture of an aerial, probably a month and a half ago.
Is that the one on Highway 10?
No, no.
Just kidding.
No, not that one.
That's what I said.
Did you really?
Oh, yeah.
Here you go.
So, quick question. Do you, so you're proposing, one, an option is to swap out the tender for the aerial. Do you feel that the aerial is, I mean, you're the expert, do you feel the aerial is more important than the tender in this, in this timeframe?
Do you look for a used aerial, or do you look for a used tender? One of them's got to be used, probably.
Right, and I would say that I would work, I would look for a used tender over a used ladder.
Okay.
But, and I think that the reality of the need is here. Use the cubes building, anything that you can imagine, that's over 20 feet, that's our challenge currently. And then the ability to extinguish, you know, not necessarily affect a rescue, you know, physically go up and get somebody with it, but really that aerial master stream to draw down onto it. We don't have that capability. But I can, I completely understand where council's coming from, from the dollar perspective. I was just trying to look for another option to bring, to see if that was something that was amenable to the council.
And I, I very much appreciate that. So, so if, I'm kind of where we're, we can maybe manage one new and one used, and if your professional opinion, maybe, I'm just, I'm, okay, I would be okay with one new, one used. And if your opinion is that the aerial is what should be new, and the tender, you think you could find a used one better, or more reasonable, or less maintenance, or less moving parts, I don't know enough, I don't know, but.
And I guess I'll clarify too, I think the reality is between engine 21, engine 12, and our current tender, we are fine until 2031-ish.
Okay.
Before we need to purchase an engine tender.
Okay.
So I could push it out, because the request was going to be, full disclosure, is what you see in front of you, the 20, the con, or the request for the engine tender that we've already done, the ladder, and then looking at, just from a cost savings, again, looking to come back to council and go, okay, hey, we need to spend another 1.8 million, another engine tender. So the idea is that we would have two engine tenders in the future that's the same, one each station, so roughly 5,000 gallons of water. We wouldn't have a need for our current tanker that we have. But that's kind of, you know, knowing kind of where we're at financially, talking to Zach and listening to what council's looking for, I'm just trying to, again, come up with some different options.
And I do really appreciate the, trying to, all trying to work together to figure out how we can meet the needs of the city, but also not bankrupt everybody.
So the only way to fund an aerial, if you were to do this scenario, because the chief brought it to me, and I said, the only way we're really able to do that is either A, start putting away a substantial amount of money, which I just don't see happening in the next year or two, to be able to afford the additional 1.3-ish million dollar difference between, we've already paid McQueen.
Yeah.
And then the difference in what the contract says for the aerial. We would do the PNC bank, we might be able to pay some of it down, so we have 200,000 if the budget doesn't change, 200,000 if we can pay some of that down towards McQueen right away. And then we just fund the rest to PNC, and it's typically a five-year lease, or they call it a lease, it's really a five-year direct placement loan, so if you did a million dollars, that's 200 grand a year roughly, and they're typically very low interest. PNC bank is strides themselves on being able to help and afford local government agencies to be able to utilize them. And I think that's even customer fashion, I think you brought up PNC bank, or lease companies that use PNC bank, for abilities to be able to fund these larger purchases. Just rough numbers, so you're aware, like, the 100 grand that you have allocated today, you'd have to make that another 100,000, so it wouldn't be that much of an increase. I mean, it's still an increase, but not that much. Be able to put 200 grand away for five or maybe even six years to be able to pay for, does that make sense? Because right now, right now, we're putting away 115,000 a year or something like that towards the purchase of the aerial.
So it's roughly 2% or 3%?
Yes. Yes. Cause you'd have to just add the 100 grand, therefore, for the lease payment on the five years, um, at the time of the first of the contract.
So really, in reality, it doesn't really matter. The bond is gonna pay, the taxpayer's gonna pay for it no matter what.
I don't know about the way, to be honest with you, besides the taxpayer paying, just how long it is.
So it doesn't matter whether you, uh, to me, it doesn't matter whether you, uh, use PNC or you get your own bond, I mean, you, you're still borrowing the money.
Yep.
Yeah, PNC is just basically a direct placement, and they just pride themselves on using local government agencies to give them loan interest.
Either way, either way, it's...
Whatever is the cheaper option for the city.
It's gonna cost a couple hundred grand a year on a levy.
Yeah.
It's going to.
With something, yeah. And it's not free, or something, yeah.
No.
So I'm still digesting this.
You gotta give up.
I'm not doing it. Same as, because the engine tender scenario wasn't something that we had talked through before as, you know, as an option, or, at least I didn't understand that, it that way. I'm, I'm trying to get more comfortable with it, because it's, you know, because it's, it's a way to get to an end here. You know, what I don't love about it is that the engine tender goes on every call, right? Versus the ladder, where, I understand that we're, you know, we're working ourselves into a place where we should have one. But the ladder is, well, there's still significant parts of Dayton that are on well-inseptic, right? So you're bringing water.
Mm-hmm.
And places that we don't have adequate flow, and, and so on. So it's, that's a real need for almost every, every fire. The ladder, I don't know, you have to feed it with something, is, is that correct? Or does it carry water also? I don't remember the specs on it.
Customer for shot, often, uh, the ladder may carry 300 gallons of water, which is very insignificant, obviously. Um, often, um, some come without pumps, and are pumped by, um, the engine tender. Um, there may be some cost savings there, it's not gonna be a ton, but if you didn't put a pump on it, but that's not the norm, if you will, um, some of the bigger cities. Um, so, the one thing I would say to you is that, um, I don't think that you need to make a decision today, unless Zach says otherwise, um, on canceling or moving in a direction, we can have further discussion. You know, and if I can, you know, I don't know how you wanna approach that. And my last comment is, is most communities today, um, and to Councilman Solonik's point, is that it's still money, it still costs the, the consumer, the taxpayer, constituent within the community, regardless if he's PNC, or if we bond for it. A lot of communities are now building these into their operational budgets, so they're taking that PNC payment, and they're building their operational plan and taking it away from the capital improvement plan, so it's just pointless.
Then by delay, Mayor or his council would be, hey, you guys wanna table this item for July, January 13th? If that's the one more time unthinkable, for just different options.
I think we should put a stake in it and do, do something.
You sparked something for me, David. The engine tender will be out the door more often, and I think for me, if I, you had to pick one to be used or the other, I would think that you would want the apparatus that isn't used as often, as opposed to the one that you're gonna put the miles and the wear and the tear on.
Say that again? From a used perspective?
From a used perspective, the engine tender would be, if it was new, you're gonna, it's going out all the time, where if you're, well, again, then it's sitting, but...
I understand what you're saying.
You know what I'm trying to say, I'm, again...
You're not as used.
No, I mean...
The aerials are...
How about this? Can we, I, I understand why we wanna get this down, but one of the big open questions is, can we get a used option for either of these? Could we, if we tabled it till January, would that, or would that give you an opportunity to say, like, yes, there are like used aerials available, period? Or like, no, there's not, like, a used aerial is simply not an option? Or like, look, there's seven used engine tenders to choose from, and one used aerial, and so therefore, we have more options for the tenders? Like, would that be enough time? It's holidays, maybe February? Um, because as someone on well-inseptic, you know, I would like water at my house if it were in stone. Um, but I also have a tall building, I don't know, but, um, this, well, that's a whole different conversation. So, um, but the used, the used thing was not something I had considered, and I don't know, you know, we don't have numbers now, cause it came up just now. Um, would that, would you, would you be okay if we waited like two hours?
I don't wanna table it, I mean, it seems like every meeting, there's a, a big fire department issue, and...
I, I agree, I think we, I think we can get to an answer here.
Okay.
I have no problem with us continuing looking, but...
For an aerial.
A used aerial.
Okay. I was just trying to play the other one out. Again, so if we canceled our order on the engine tender, applied that down payment essentially to the, to the ladder, we would still owe a million something on that, which is the financing that you, you've been talking about. That's a much more manageable number to try to incorporate into, into the budget without bonding. Then, there isn't the same urgency to find a used tender, because you're talking about 2031. Is that the year that you said?
Councilor for shot, yes, that, so the current scheduled replacement for engine 21 is 2030. So the idea was to come forward here, you know, I was actually looking at beginning of next year, just based on a cost savings, you know, signing the contract in advance, but, um... Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is, is that the, and I apologize, I was trying to think what I was gonna say, is that I need to go back to, if we, say you wanted to pursue the, the ladder. I need to ask the sales member, the salesperson, Pat, if that 2.497 goes down a little bit, because we've already given them 1.1 million. So they gave us a discount on, you know, from 1.3...
1-0.
1-0, that 845, down to 1.165, I believe, is like 140, 160,000.
Correct.
Something like that. So I don't know that, I, I bring that up as a point of discussion as well.
No, I think that, I think that's good to think about that, because I know from the, from the agreement, there was a, a cash price for the thing, if you paid upfront, and they're not gonna give us that deal, but is there something else that they could get? Because we're, you know, we're essentially loaning them the money until they, until we deliver it.
Yep.
You got it. Yeah, we paid, 1.3 was the contract number, and 1.186 was the actual paid cash number. So it was, it was 100 and some thousand dollars, and it was a guaranteed percentage, you know, it was a four and a half, or something like 10% reduction in the price per year, and then we paid early, so.
And they did indicate during that process, and this process, that at any point throughout the contract, if we wanted to put money down, that it would be, there'd be some sort of discount, I believe, in my conversations with them.
So, so is it fair? Let's go to Jan, the first meeting in January, do a little bit of homework, see what we got. I don't have a problem waiting, I don't.
Mayor remembers... What are we gonna know different in January?
What are we gonna know different? Hopefully, he's got some used rig that he can find out there.
It's only two months worth of looking. Over the holidays, that's why I would say probably more like February.
Ask Martin, the king at, uh, trying to invite...
We won't have a whole lot of time between the chief and I, cause I...
Well, and not only that, but if he's got, say, a year to hunt for something, you know, there might be a, uh, some sort of a fine liquid we had with the tanker.
I think there's always used, there's always used equipment, Mayor and council, there's always used equipment out, it's just, what's the quality of used equipment? It's a note of, then a used vehicle. If you need a vehicle today, you could probably find one down the road, but do you...
Do you want that one?
Do you want that one? I don't know, so that, that would be the question.
Well, and for me, it was more to the used, like, which thing has more moving parts, right? Like, I'm thinking about what I want used versus what I want new. The thing that's more complicated, but I see your point of the thing that's used, like, that it gets more frequent use, and that we're going to put the wear and tear on, I could see wanting that new. But I was also thinking the more complicated machinery with more moving parts and more things to go wrong, so...
There's many ways you can do, look at it as Zach points out to me, and it depends on what your priorities are, so...
I don't wanna buy a new aerial.
I don't wanna buy a new.
A lot of communities don't do that, and so I just...
We have two known new aerials, so we got...
No new aerial.
Then we got...
Used, and get the engine tender, that's mine.
That does make more sense, really, I mean, it does.
Okay, so that's a known new aerial.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So now I need, now I need a...
Let's go for a million dollar aerial.
I need a motion in a second, then we can...
So, does the motion have to encompass all of it?
No.
No.
It just need a no, cancellation.
The other one's just a guidance, to say, look for used equipment.
Yep.
Use aerial specifically.
Unless you'd like specific, we're, on your motion.
I mean, I just wanna make sure that it's known that, like, the motion would be to cancel the contract for the aerial, continue with our purchase of the engine tender.
Yes.
And give direction to go out and look for, uh, what a used aerial in good condition.
So the tender's already on the way.
It's already done.
I was making sure, wait, to know that we're not touching that, that that is, like, we're good, just so there's no...
This is just to cancel that order.
Okay, well, my motion stands, whatever you needed out of the motion that I put forward. It sounded good to you.
Cancellation.
Okay.
Okay.
Direction, so I appreciate it.
And I need a second.
Is it second?
Yep. No. I need a second.
Oh, I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one. Okay, on to the long-term plan.
Hopefully a choice.
It looks good.
It's one, it's one bar.
I do have one question.
How, how can we table this till, uh, later?
No. Mayor and his council, so, yeah, here's Danny, many questions, what did we did do? And I got direction to get tonight, so I'm not gonna make a change in the long-term plan, but I did get direction about buying a used aerial that's now removed off the long-term plan, so it'll be added back on next year, like I mentioned the last, two council meetings ago, that things can go on and off, it feels really awkward and weird, and so, just wanted to make that clear, so...
I, oh, go ahead.
No, I said, I do have a question in that same vein, of if we don't find an aerial, yeah, let's just say it takes us a year, whatever it may be, is the plan to still then put money away towards it? Or...
That'll be the direction of the council.
Not planned today, but, yeah, could.
It's the long-term plan, I'm just asking.
Well...
Isn't it already baked in there?
Currently, the long-term plan is 115,000, it's like 116 and some change, whatever the difference was between the reduction in the levy or whatever, cause that's what the council gave direction at last council meeting, to reduce the levy? But yeah, so there are some dollars available in the long-term plan, just be able to put that towards the, towards any aerial, just like the 100,000 dollars last year was put towards it, that's still in there, it's not lost.
That's true, yeah.
And it would still go towards aerials, it's going to be a used one instead of a new one.
I, just making sure that it's not also coming out with this.
Non-year marked, we call those non-year marked dollars, which means they're not earmarked for some sort of spending dollars, or whatever.
But to make a difference, you're gonna have to bump that number up. Otherwise, you're gonna be waiting nine or 10 years.
It's kinda bumped, right? I mean, it's baked in.
Yeah, cause, so it was 100 grand last year, and now this year, it's a total of 115,000, which means we didn't add 115 grand to it, cause all of that addition came out when we reduced it with fiscal...
Oh, because of the fiscal.
You got it.
Can we nail that down next year? Cause it's gonna suck next year, too.
It's not gonna get any lower.
You gotta hold me against it? I tried my best.
I seen Champlin pulled in a good chunk of money from, we might as well wrote him out a check. They're a receiver of...
They are a giant receiver.
It was a good chunk of their budget.
So I'm here to stand for the...
The long-term plan. Somehow or another, we really gotta work on this thing, cause 2028 is ugly as ever.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask about that. I almost think we need a work session to really look at these costs, cause that's the wall I was talking about, and it's a big ugly one.
I think everyone's aware of that.
Well...
I don't think anybody's unaware of the, the quote unquote wall. It got, it got pushed from 2028 to 2031.
Yeah.
With the large facilities. Um, doesn't mean everything got pushed, cause there's still public work expansion that's needed.
Right.
And we'll talk about why that's needed with the council and whatnot, so...
The, the 200, so that's what we assume, 200 homes?
200 homes, that's correct.
We call that a conservative?
That is an average. That doesn't mean every year we're gonna hit that, that means...
Well, I guess my concern is, is that if we assume 200, um, I mean, initially, we didn't have that.
We're gonna be 150 or less.
That means 200 homes and/or businesses equivalent. It doesn't always mean new homes.
Yes.
That can also mean businesses. So one business might come out as 50 homes. And then we might only have 150 new homes, and that would equal total 200.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it doesn't matter what.
Correct, it doesn't matter what it is, yeah. So it's 200, we use 200 new homes.
Okay, so you think, as far as some of the business we pulled in, that that's still conservative?
Yeah, so like Opus, for example, Opus was probably equivalent to buy like 40 homes, so, you know, we might only have to have on 60 new homes that year in order for us to equal, and then one business.
I'm good, then. That was the only point I had on the whole thing, so, anybody else?
It's an average, so...
I left my notes at home, but I don't remember having anything major, other than the big giant wall, and...
And so we'll plan on having a work, the council's direction, we'll have a work session, then maybe early, making like March of next year, does that seem like a good timeframe? To have a conversation and work session with the council about long-term plan, discussion of just, let's have it on the table, let's put a bunch of access through, or let's discuss it, let's go through the things, so that we are all on the same page.
Do we have water, some sort of water thing now down there?
We won't know if that...
Isn't that right around March as well?
May?
I thought that was March.
We thought, we thought May. That's what we wrote the law in last, well, that was November 18.
It may be that they have...
It was a month, it was May.
It may be they have better numbers, but I know they were gonna make decisions towards May or something like that.
That was last week.
Okay, so, anybody else have any concerns about long-term plan?
I don't, I don't think so, because we're, we're gonna have a work session around some of these further out years.
Yeah.
So, and most of my questions were in the 28, 29 kinda timeframe, so...
The plan will be for a work session, then, I guess it'll try to do Q1 of next year, that's why, it's still kinda fresh in our mind, then we can have a conversation, and I'll lay the things out that you have already approved, and then say, here was where we're at, and let's talk about it.
Um, and you wanna, a vote, right?
Yep.
On this thing? I need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Dave?
I'll second.
Stephanie, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
You're not approving the purchases, you're just accepting the plan, so...
Okay, um, EDA hire, yeah. Oh, and the final, final, yep.
Motion approved?
Yep.
Sweet.
I'll second.
Hold on. So I kinda misspoke, that was the whole shooting match, not just the ED. Okay, so Scott and Dave, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. That one's down. Approved five to zero.
Make a motion to approve.
The PD hire?
Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carries five to zero. You're on a roll there, dude.
I got nothing about her name.
Well, it's, it's already, it's already in there. The name is...
Motion to approve.
The motion's mostly, all right. Dave, you need a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't love it, but I don't have it.
I, I know, I don't either. The problem is, it's kinda what people select it.
Right, it was the mission.
Yep.
Um, it's probably the best out of all the AD that we got.
Yeah.
There was some really.
Eight-five is what it says.
Okay.
But that's where I'm at, like, do I love it? No, but it's.
Yeah, so one thing just to note for the council, Mayor Council, we are gonna come forward with a naming policy next year, to be able to do this, because this is the first we've ever done, a policy, or a park name, because they're normally historically named after the development that they, that they reside in. This is the first park we've ever had that's not in only one development, so we went based on what we've done on every other process for naming.
Do you think a policy's gonna help? Because, I mean, it seemed like it went okay.
It went okay, I think it's just more or less just everyone identifying the process, so everyone knows what's happening. And it'll be more expensive than just parks, it'll be facilities and stuff, because then we will know longer term, talk with the communities when they start having different things, they start having naming rights and branding and whatever. Just want to make sure the council's aware that we're gonna.
Okay, so that, okay, that was approved five to zero. Now we're on to close session. Motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota's statute one three D oh three for labor negotiations. I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
I'm gonna push my car out. Zach, you can't even tell you're gonna push my car out.
He doesn't have a car.
Hope for a high call.
I just need a person to.
Brand new, we're gonna.
If there are no objections, we will be adjourned.
Adjourned.
Alright, we're adjourned.
Thank you.